This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on your website, on our website, for a listing and application. Mr. LaFond, we have executive session scheduled for 6:00 PM, but is it correct that we no longer need that executive session?
That is correct. The only outstanding litigation, piece of litigation has now been resolved, so I know, I'm sure Mr. Corbo may want to give us a quick update on that.
We can do that in open session, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, so...
So I'll just skip to the pledge and move on from there.
Yeah, why don't we start with the pledge and our community prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all what we can become. Help us achieve the goal of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve and that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Belvin. All right, Mr. Corbo?
If I could just interrupt real quickly.
Yes.
As I mentioned, the only, the outstanding piece of litigation has been resolved, so we believe, we don't know that we're gonna, may not be end up in court sometime, but I thought it would be helpful for Greg just to briefly kind of explain the enforcement process because, I know, citizens don't necessarily, elected officials, it's very frustrating for all of us. This past piece of litigation that was resolved took a year, and that was a year of fairly aggressive enforcement. So even when we're on it, it can take a long time. So I just thought maybe Greg can just, a couple minutes on how that process could work.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Chair, before they start, if we're gonna have the window open, everyone needs to really speak into their microphone. Just a little thought there.
Thank you. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So just by way of introduction, we did, Rick did ask me to come down to give you a legal update in executive session, and as it turns out that you have no litigation pending that I'm handling and no strategy for us to talk about. There are some cases that are pending in which the town is a party, however, all of those cases are being handled by and through your insurance company. So I just thought that since I was here, and I'm going to be talking to you about the open meeting law issues later, that I would just give you sort of a brief update on some of the things that I've been working on or that the firm has been working on over the past few months. And as Rick mentioned, probably most significantly is the litigation concerning the 164 Center Street enforcement action. And as you're likely aware, this case involved a situation in which a property owner was using their property for, as a contractor's yard and for storage of equipment and supplies related to their landscaping business in violation of the town's zoning bylaws. And through aggressive litigation over the course of almost a year, we did achieve a successful result in that litigation, and it's my understanding that that activity is no longer going on. And we received a court judgment of $9,600 payable to the town, which is currently imposed as a lien on the owner's property, which means that unless and until they pay off that judgment to the town, if they go to sell their property, you would be paid out of any proceeds from the sale. So, you know, just as Rick had mentioned, you know, just to talk a little bit about the enforcement process, because this is something that does seem like a bit of an anomaly to many people who are not involved in the system. You know, from a legal perspective, these cases tend to be very simple. There's a bylaw or a rule or a regulation, someone's not complying with it, and we want them to comply. And, you know, we have a very high success rate in going to court to obtain enforcement of those kinds of orders, but unfortunately, for some reason or another, a certain property owners who are not inclined to comply with orders of the town are also not inclined to comply with orders of courts. And so oftentimes, these cases involve multiple court appearances before someone will eventually be convinced to come into compliance. But, you know, ultimately, compliance is achieved, and, you know, it's unfortunate that it doesn't always happen as quickly as we would like or as cost-effectively as we would like, but, you know, it's important for you as a board to know, as a policymaking board, that, you know, the, if you stand behind the orders of your public officials, we will stand behind them as well, and the courts will also stand behind them. And, you know, we achieved this significant success here, and we've had other cases in the past of a similar nature in which we've succeeded for the town. And, you know, it's my opinion that this type of civil enforcement is an effective remedy for these types of violations. So before I just go on to talk more generally about some of the other items, do you have questions about either this case or the enforcement process generally?
Mr. Belvin?
With this judgment, did that pay for all legal fees?
Um...
Yeah, the, there is a, part of the judgment is for legal fees. I forget the exact amount, Bob, but there is, I believe, I believe it's over $3,000 for legal fees. It's my recollection without looking at the documents again, Bob.
And this money, is there interest attached to it, being a lien?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a judgment, and we have an execution, and it bears interest at the statutory rate, which I believe is 12% a year.
Thank you.
Well, but before it even gets to this point, you'll have an enforcement officer, whether it's a building, zoning officer, planning administrator, whatever the case is, and it usually takes a matter of months trying to comply enforcement before it even gets to the legal process. We have one complaint ongoing right now at a location in town, and one of the neighbors had complained, this is now months ago, and between the departments downstairs trying to have interaction with the alleged violator, you wanna, you know, going through a process of trying to, you know, again, make contact, have reasonable sit-down discussions, and ultimately maybe move to, you know, some sort of local order enforcement. I mean, it could take three or four months before you even get to a point where, you know, legal action has to be taken in the court. And correct me if I'm wrong, but if those initial phases aren't, those steps aren't taken, you can have a tough time even having a reasonable, you know, getting your foot in the door to courtroom. So it's very frustrating, you know, for us, it's frustrating for a citizen who has, you know, a legitimate issue with some issue in the neighborhood, because again, this was a, this past one, just as an example, was fairly aggressive for the last year, and I think there were probably like four hearing dates to go, you know, to get an order, to get a contempt order, then finally to get a judgment. So it takes a long time when people don't want to comply. I do find, though, that those, at times when you have citizens who complain, and again, very justifiably, that they are usually pretty reasonable in understanding when they have a sense of the process. And quite frankly, I think it's helpful for them to understand that we are frustrated with the process too. We really do want to help, not just help, but you know, every time you, you know, you almost set a precedent by letting certain violations go. The danger with this 164, and I know Bob can tell you, is that there's some reason to believe that the landowner across the street is allowing the owner of 164 to conduct some of his business on his land. If that ultimately doesn't cease, that will have to be another enforcement action against that property owner. So, and here we go again, so...
Right, and so, yeah, it is important to understand that, you know, while you or the public may not see things happening, things might be happening, and, you know, it's always advisable to try to resolve these things amicably, you know, to have the enforcement officer going down there and trying to work with the person and with the neighbors, you know, to come to a resolution that is satisfactory to everyone. And certainly, you know, the courts want to see you resolve these things, you know, here rather than there. But, you know, the message to take away from this is that, you know, you know, we're here to work with the property owners, all of the property owners, and we want to try to resolve these things, but, you know, these mechanisms are in place that if you're not willing to work with the town, that there will be consequences. And, you know, there were serious consequences for this person. Not only do they have this judgment that is now a lien on their property, but they had to hire a lawyer to defend them. It was at significant cost, whereas if there had been cooperation up front, perhaps it could have been resolved in a much more expeditious way. And, you know, there are other cases, you know, I've had cases where, you know, it gets to a point where the court will appoint a receiver, which is an independent third party that goes in and does the work that the property owner is not either willing or able to do. And in those cases, the costs of the receivership are astronomical, and in almost all of those cases, the property owner ends up losing ownership of their property to the receiver to pay their costs. So, you know, there are significant consequences that can flow, and so it's always advisable to try to resolve these things locally, even if it looks like that that's taking more time. Obviously, if there's some imminent threat to public health or safety or the occupants of a dwelling, you know, we stand ready to go into court, you know, immediately, right away, and we've done that before. But, you know, certainly, if you can work things out and give people time to try to get to that point, that's always preferable, and to try to use court as like a last-case scenario.
Is there anything else for Mr. Corbo? All right, seeing none. Mr. Corbo has another item a little later on our agenda, at 6:40, open meeting law discussion. I wonder if there could be a motion to move that up earlier in the agenda?
I make that motion to move it up.
A second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I just, I thought Mr. Corbo was gonna discuss the other issue with the Tonacav and the Waste District and Mr. Tinkham, that case?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, no, we are not handling that case.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second to move up the open meeting law discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Corbo?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So this item is sort of a refresher on what the requirements of the open meeting law are. You know, it's good to kind of, you know, talk about these things every once in a while just to make sure that everyone is doing things the right way and to try to clarify any, you know, questions that you might have or, you know, things that you might find ambiguous in the law or different ways of possibly doing things. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I understand that you all have a hard copy of it, and I know that Elaine and Rick have an electronic copy that they can send to all of you if you want to see it. And so I'll just start going through it, and as there are questions or if there are questions, just feel free to interrupt, and we can go through this however you want.
And just so you know, I have forwarded that, an email to the board with that electronically, so you do have it at your disposal if and when you want to access it.
Thank you. Okay, great. So the things that I'm going to touch on generally are, you know, what are the applicable definitions of, you know, what constitutes a meeting and what types of discussions are subject to the law? And then, you know, what types of information needs to be in your meeting notice, under what circumstances, and how you can enter executive session, what the requirements are for keeping minutes, and finally, what the enforcement mechanisms are if there are violations of the law. So to begin with, the open meeting law has three major requirements: notice, purposes, and minute keeping. So with respect to notice, issues of timing, location of your meeting, and the level of detail that must be given. With respect to the purposes, what constitutes a meeting, when you can go into executive session, and when you can meet in emergencies and things like that. And then finally, the requirement to keep minutes in terms of content, timing, and procedures for approval. Okay, so to begin with, you know, we start off as, you know, when does the open meeting law apply? And the open meeting law applies whenever there is a deliberation amongst a quorum of a public body to discuss matters within the jurisdiction of that body. So a deliberation is any oral or communication through any medium, including electronic mail, between or among a quorum of a public body on any public business. A quorum is a majority of the full complement of the body. So what that means is that if you are a five-member board, a quorum is always going to be three. If you have two vacancies, your quorum is still three. If you have one vacancy, your quorum is still three. Quorum is based on the number of seats on the board, not necessarily the number of seats that are filled at any given time. And a public body is any multiple-member board, commission, committee, or subcommittee within the town, however created, elected, appointed, or otherwise constituted to establish a public purpose. So that means that a public body is not only your, you know, formally elected boards like the Select Board or the Planning Board or other boards like the Zoning Board or the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, but it can also be other types of multiple-member bodies that are less formally constituted. So for example, if the Board of Selectmen wanted to have a, establish a review of the town's bylaws, and the board said, okay, we'd like to have a committee of, comprised of all the department heads and the chair of each major board of the town, sit down together, review the bylaws, and bring back to us a recommendation for improvements. Well, that would likely be considered a public body of the town because it is established by a formal vote of a public body. In contrast, if you were to say to the town administrator, we'd like you to review the bylaws and come back to us with recommendations for improvement, and then the town administrator says, okay, I have this job to do, I'm gonna sit down with all of the department heads and get their input as to what improvements should be required, that would not be considered a public body because it's a decision that the town administrator has the authority to make by himself, and therefore he can bring together any group of people he wants to help him make that decision. So the distinction there is in terms of how is the body created? Is it a body that's created in law, either through the general laws or the town bylaws? Or is it a committee that is created by a public body? In either of those two cases, if it's created in law or created by a body subject to the open meeting law, then the subcommittee is also subject to the open meeting law. If it's created by an individual who is not subject to the open meeting law, then the group is also not subject to the open meeting law.
So, just so we're all clear?
Yep.
We are about to appoint, within the next couple of meetings, a town administrator screening committee. This board will appoint that committee, so that committee will be subject to the open meeting law.
That's correct. And so a screening committee is subject to the open meeting law. A screening committee does have to do its business in public session for the most part. There are exceptions that allows a preliminary screening committee to do some of its work in executive session, including the initial screening of candidates, because that is something that is of a sensitive nature in that people might not want to apply for a job if they have to do so publicly, and then, you know, possibly not get hired and then make their current employer unhappy with them. So up until the point where the committee decides on finalists, they can do their work in executive session. But then also other things like, you know, well, what do we want in a town administrator? You know, those are things that the committee would also do in open session because there's no need for confidentiality in that. But otherwise, you know, they have to, you know, post notice with the town clerk 48 hours in advance, they need to have agendas, they need to have motions, they need to keep minutes, all of those requirements would apply.
Thank you.
So in addition to deciding, you know, whether or not you are a public body that is subject to the law, you also have to decide whether or not you're having a meeting that is subject to the law. And there are certain exceptions of things that do not constitute meetings. So for example, an onsite inspection of a project or a program does not constitute a meeting as long as the members do not deliberate while they're there. So for example, you know, the Conservation Commission may need to do a site visit, and it's not possible for, to have a public meeting, say, in the middle of a cranberry bog. And so, you know, there's no reason to post notice that you're having this site visit to allow the public to attend as long as the members do not talk amongst themselves while they're there. So, you know, the purpose of the site visit is to allow each of the members to observe what needs to be observed, and then when they need to talk about it, they can come back to Town Hall and they can have a properly posted meeting, and then they could talk about what they saw and how it affects their decision-making. While they're there, they can talk to the property owner or other staff who might be present with them, and as long as they don't talk to each other, then it's not considered a meeting. Likewise, an attendance at a social gathering is not considered a meeting as long as the members don't talk about public business while they're there. Attendance at a training session would not constitute a public meeting. And attendance at a meeting of another public body would not constitute being at a meeting unless your body intends to participate in that meeting as well, in which case then that would either have to be posted as a joint meeting or separately as two separate meetings. Yes?
Mr. Belvin?
So get this correct, because it's very important that people really understand, and officials for the town understand, that site visits are not there, it inhibits the ability to have a fair hearing when you have officials go ahead and deliberate about this permit or variance that they're looking for, and the property owner doesn't know they're talking about it. And it's not until you find out after the fact and you get a meeting minutes that work there and you find out, oh my God, they were discussing all this at the time of it. I mean, that violates your rights for open and fair hearing. I know, I've been there, it's happened to me. So hopefully this training session will get to all the boards and committees in this town, so they understand that site visits, they can't be discussing stuff back and forth, especially in conditions that you have no clue that's being done, because the applicant, they have rights, and town officials can't violate those.
And Mr. LaFond, just as a point of clarification, we will be having one of these sessions for the boards and committees in town, correct?
Yes, yes. We'll just be discussing the best format for that, whether it's live or whether there's a good type of webinar format or whatever. We'll be discussing something through Greg to present, well, beyond this group. Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
I think it was raised in terms of, for instance, if you had, you know, a majority of this board attend a planning board meeting, members of this board speak at that meeting, where's the line here in that type of scenario?
So, you know, that's a, that's a difficult, you know, question to answer in a vacuum, but, you know, let's take like a planning board scenario where the planning board might be considering, you know, granting a special permit to someone. I don't know that this board would have any jurisdiction over that, and so there would be nothing that would prevent the members of the board from sitting in the audience and participating in that planning board meeting to the same extent as any other member of the public could participate. And, you know, what I would suggest in that circumstance is that, you know, particularly if there is a quorum of your board in the audience, that you say, you know, I'm speaking on my own behalf, not as a member of the Select Board. You know, where it gets more difficult is, let's say, the Select Board is having its, you know, annual budget deliberations and, or the Finance Committee, and let's say the School Committee comes in and wants to present their budget, that would likely have to be posted as a joint meeting because that's a scenario in which both bodies have an interest in the subject matter, and they're actively deliberating over what is being said rather than simply being there to either observe or participate in their individual capacities. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Belvin?
So we'll take the planning board scenario there, is that the planning board's having a hearing on a solar project that's going on, and we go to meet, we as a members come in there and didn't know that these people were gonna show up, but I go in there and I speak up and say, hey, I don't like this, I don't like how this is going and whatnot. Because my other members are there, I didn't know they were gonna be there, and now they are there, do I not be able to say something during that time because that solar agreement may come before us?
So, yeah, and that's why I said, you know, it gets, it gets to be a little bit tricky, and that's why, you know, I would suggest that if you find yourself in that scenario, that you make it clear that, you know, I am speaking as a, as an individual resident of the town, which you certainly have a right to do, and that I'm expressing my views on what is in front of the planning board, and, you know, that I am not taking a position on anything that may come in front of the, may or may not come in front of the Select Board in the future. But if it is something that you both actively have a position on or a role in, you know, then you might want to think about posting it as a joint meeting so that everybody can have a full and frank discussion of the matter.
Can I, can I raise one, one question here too? Oftentimes it comes up, and I'll use that scenario that Bob had, where some would say, well, okay, well, you're on this board, you're on two boards, there's something that may become before both boards, well, for you to speak on this, isn't that a conflict? Or if you're on another board, multiple boards, and I think it gets kind of, people get a little confused by what is a conflict. I mean, it's not a conflict of interest because you have opinions and you sit on multiple boards per se. It's a conflict of interest if you have a financial stake in the matter that's pending. Can you just maybe try to crystallize my thoughts a little bit there?
Yeah. I don't... Yeah, I don't, you know, again, it's, it's murky waters, right? So I don't know how much I can crystallize it. But, you know, there's, there was a case once that I saw that said that you don't check your first amendment rights at the door when you become a public official. So, you know, you still have the right to have opinions, to talk about things in, in public forums as long as you adhere to your responsibility to, when things come in front of you, to apply the law and the facts and reach a fair decision. So just because you have an opinion for or against a particular project doesn't mean that you have a conflict of interest if that project comes in front of you as long as you, you are able to fully and fairly perform your duties as a board member. And so that's why I, you know, I sort of keep coming back to this. But I think it's important that whenever you're speaking on behalf of yourself, that you make it clear that you're speaking on behalf of yourself and not on behalf of your board or your position. And, you know, depending on how, you know, strenuously for or against something you may have advocated, when that thing does come in front of you, it might make sense to make a disclosure to say, look, I know I've spoken out on this subject in the past. However, it is not going to affect my ability to sit impartially on this matter that's in front of me today.
Mr. Corbo? How about a, a situation with social media where you have an issue and you perhaps have multiple members of a board that comment on that, on that issue? Can you address that?
Yes. And so this gets into what is the, the definition now of a deliberation. And a deliberation is any exchange of ideas amongst a quorum of the board relating to that board's business. And it doesn't matter what format that deliberation occurs in. So it could be in an in-person conversation. It could be over the telephone. It could be in an email. It can be in a text message. It can also be in a social media chat. And so, you know, we always sort of advocate for caution when using social media to talk about public business because there is that potential for inadvertent violations. So, you know, you may make a comment on something on social media and then, you know, all of a sudden, two more board members reply and now you've had a deliberation. You know, you're a five-member board, so you have a little bit more wiggle room. But imagine you're a three-member board and all it takes is two people to be involved in this conversation and all of a sudden they've had a deliberation. You know, the same thing with, with respect to email. You know, you may email one person, but then that email ends up getting forwarded to the group. And then someone in the group responds and now all of a sudden, what, what seemed like a, a rather innocuous event turns into a deliberation. And so, you know, the, the, the guidance of the attorney general is very clear that emails should only be used for non-substantive matters. Distributing the agenda, discussing scheduling, distributing meeting materials. And that's it. That there shouldn't be any substantive discussion or exchange of ideas in an electronic format, that any of those discussions need to happen in a public meeting. But that being said, you know, what the open meeting law and the interpretations of it don't quite recognize is that all of these things exist and they're part of our everyday life and we use them, you know, in, in our businesses and in our personal lives. And it's hard to just check that at the door when you come in here. And so, you know, while you have to be careful and we strongly urge you not to do it, the, the way to fix it, if it happens, is to bring it in here at a meeting and to, and to say, okay, on such and such a date, there was an email exchange amongst three members or five members and this is what it said. And then, once you've had that discussion in an open forum, then the purposes of the open meeting law have been satisfied. Because now, you know, because the whole point of the open meeting law is not to have decisions and discussions being made behind closed doors. And so, once those discussions are brought out into the public, now you've met the requirements of the open meeting law. So, you know, it's not a perfect fix. You know, the, you're expected to be having these discussions in real time. But if they do happen, that's the way that you fix them, is, is by discussing them in a properly posted public meeting. Thank you.
I just had a quick question. To go back to the social media aspect. So if somebody posts something on Facebook and I comment and then Mark comments, then Sarah comments, but it has nothing to do with anything before the board, something separate. Is that's because I, I know I've been told before, you know, don't reply to anything if like Bob posted something and I said, hey, good job, and then all of a sudden someone else liked it. We've, we've just violated and have an open meeting law violation. But it has nothing to do with anything that would come before the board.
Right. So, you know, social discussions are not subject to the open meeting law. You're free to continue to have those amongst yourselves. Comment on public business that does not involve your board or is not within your board's jurisdiction are fair game. You know, for you as a select board, it's harder because, you know, your reach is much broader than, than some of the, the other boards. But, you know, if it's something that is truly outside the, the scope of your authority as a board, then it does not count. It has to be on something that is within your jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
So feel free to share about your kids' achievements on social media and, and all that stuff and, and comment on it. That's no problem. All right. So, so now we, we've talked a little bit about, okay, who has to comply with the open meeting law and what types of discussions have to comply? The, the next step is to, to figure out, okay, so now we know we want to have a, a discussion about our public business. How do we go about doing that? Okay, so the first step is to, to schedule a meeting. And the way you schedule a meeting is to publish an official notice of that meeting. For as long as I can remember, those notices have always been called agendas and people continue to call them agendas, but for some reason in the open meeting law, it's only referred to as a meeting notice. So when we talk about meeting notices, we're also talking about agendas. They're one and the same. And so in order to have a meeting, you have to post that notice with the town clerk's office at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. The forty-eight hours does not include Saturdays, Sundays, or legal holidays, but it does include regular business days that town hall happens to be closed. So if you're going to have a Monday meeting, then your meeting notice has to be posted the Thursday before that. If you're having a Tuesday meeting and Monday was a holiday, then your meeting notice still has to be published on the Thursday before that. Okay? Your meeting notice has to include the date, time, and location of the meeting. And it has to include the, all of the topics that the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed at the meeting. This is the, the, the biggest pitfall of, you know, for, for public bodies to navigate in terms of, you know, what constitutes something that, that has to be on the notice and what level of detail has to be contained. So first of all, it's, it's topics that the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed. Which means that, you know, if the, the chair was aware of something that was going to be raised at the meeting, then it needs to be in the meeting notice. And it's a, it's a reasonableness standard, which means that, you know, even if the chair themselves wasn't aware, if a reasonable chair should have known, then they're going to be held responsible for putting it on the notice. But there are of course circumstances where you have a meeting scheduled and something comes up within that forty-eight hour window or you don't have a meeting scheduled and there's an emergency and you are not prevented from meeting sooner than the forty-eight hours. So, you know, for example, let's say you had this meeting scheduled here today and yesterday we found out that a lawsuit was filed against the town and that there was a hearing coming up on Wednesday. Well, then it would be reasonable that the chair couldn't have known forty-eight hours in advance that a lawsuit was going to be filed. And you can't wait to, to discuss the matter because then the hearing date will have passed. So in that case, you can still discuss the matter at your meeting. You can still go into executive session. However, what you'd be required to do is to post your, your, update your notice as far in advance as possible. You know, so if you found out on Monday at noon that you were going to have to add something to your agenda on Tuesday, you should post right away. Of course, if it's not really an emergency and it can wait, it should probably wait. Likewise, you know, if there is no meeting scheduled at all and you have an emergency, post the notice as far in advance as possible. Only discuss the emergency matter. And then schedule a meeting as soon thereafter within the required notice period to ratify any decisions that had been made. So for example, an area in which I, I experience this on occasion is with the board of health. There might be a situation where the board of health gets notified on a cold January day that a senior is living in a house with no heat and no electricity and running water and they have to do something, you know, to relocate that person right away. Well, it's not going to be possible for them to post notice and wait for forty-eight hours when, when some imminent harm can come to this person. So, you know, they can meet, they can issue an emergency order and then forty-eight hours after that, they can, they can meet again in a more public way and ratify that decision. So, so does, does that make sense in terms of, you know, what, what needs to be on your notice and when you need to wait the, the full forty-eight hours?
That's to me. Mr. Belvin?
Yeah. So a discussion, just say, this discussion is held here on Joe Schmo. Okay? And then that discussion transfers into, from talking about Joe Schmo and his project or whatever. And then all of a sudden it morphs into another discussion where you're talking about Jane, all right, and her project that's going on over there and, and it really just sidetracks over to that discussion. Would the two discussions now have to change the agenda because you did deliberate this other, discuss this other project? Or how, how does that equate to the separation of two different topics? Even though they're kind of similar, but they're two different things there?
Right. So, you know, it, there's a little bit of, you know, sort of subjective intent to that, right? So, you know, if you knew that by talking about project A, you were, you were going to talk, inevitably talk about project B, then I would say you should post notice of both. But if it's a natural segue or, or a spontaneous segue where you started talking about A and then someone brought up B, you know, my position would be you can have a certain amount of discussion with respect to that. I would suggest that you not take any votes on project B, but that, you know, you say, well, you know, okay, the, these are some good points about project B. Why don't we put project B on the agenda for our next meeting? So that we can have a more full and fair discussion of it. Likewise, you know, you have a, a public comment period. And during that public comment period, if somebody raises something that's not on your agenda and that you couldn't have reasonably expected would be raised, you're allowed to respond. And you're allowed to, to discuss that. But again, you're encouraged to say, well, you know, that's, that really is something that's going to involve a more in-depth conversation. Let's put that on the agenda for our next meeting or, or let's wait until we can have a more full and fair opportunity. So again, it's, you know, really depends on how it is that it's coming up. If it's something that's truly spontaneous, a certain amount of discussion is okay. But you can't, you know, use the, the guise of spontaneity when you knew that two things were really going to morph into one. Does that make sense?
Well, it's good, it's good to know that we should, when residents come in here and they speak to us at citizen participation, it's always been the rule that we don't discuss anything because of the open meeting law was always thrown. And I kind of knew that and it kind of frustrates me just with the school committee because they've always done that too, is you go up and bring an issue to the school committee during their participa- citizen participation and it's like you get no response at all. And, and it's kind of frustrating that our government officials here don't respond to residents' comments and concerns. So it's, it's good that we can make those comments. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and I just think, you know, my opinion is that again, best practices is, you know, limited engagement and then, you know, if it's something that requires more substantive discussion, put it off until an actual meeting. You know, I think that's kind of like a, a, a fair compromise to that problem that you raised.
Thank you.
Okay. So then we get into this issue of, all right, how detailed does your meeting notice have to be? And what the regulations of the attorney general say are that it has to have enough detail that a person can, a member of the public can look at your agenda and be able to identify, you know, what it is that you intend to discuss so that they can make a judgment about whether or not they want to come to your meeting. So, you know, things like if you're going to be talking about renewing and someone's license or permit, it would be reasonable to put the name of the applicant, their location, and the type of permit that you're considering. Even with respect to your, your annual renewals, the attorney general would require that, you know, if you're, that you actually provide a list of all the licenses that are subject to renewal at that particular meeting. If you're talking about the town meeting warrant, you know, you as the, the select board could reasonably say, okay, discussion of, of town meeting warrant. But, you know, if you knew that we were only going to talk about certain articles, then you should just, you should put in the meeting notice the specific articles that you intend to discuss. So, you know, it's really anything that would help a member of the public make a judgment about whether or not they have an interest in what you're talking about. You shouldn't use, you know, acronyms or abbreviations if it can be avoided because, you know, while you may think that something is, is an obvious abbreviation because you do this every day, someone in the public may not understand that. And so it's always a good idea to try to spell those things out. You know, you should also try to avoid use of sort of general headings like old business, new business. You know, you should always try to, try to list specific things under those types of headings. You know, again, so that people can understand, you know, that they have an interest in this and they either want to come to your meeting or they don't. For executive session, the general rule is that, you know, you have to list the, 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 the item number that you're going into executive session on. And then all of the information that can be listed without ruining the purpose of the executive session. So for litigation, that usually means listing the case caption and the parties. For real estate, it usually means listing the, the address. But then there are other things where you wouldn't list any details. Like if you were going into executive session to discuss a person's reputation or character or employee discipline, you wouldn't list the name of you wouldn't list the name of the person because that in and of itself would compromise the purpose of the executive session, which is to protect their privacy. There might be other circumstances where the fact that someone knows that you're discussing litigation with respect to them might in and of itself compromise your position, or likewise with respect to real estate. So, you know, there is some flexibility, but generally speaking, you know, you wanna put as much information as you can put in there without compromising the reason for the executive session itself. So any questions about content of meeting notices? Okay, so then, you know, we, we have to consider the location of the meeting. And, you know, now that the, the state of emergency is coming to an end, I suspect that we will go back to your, the prior rules for remote meetings, which are that, you know, the members of the board all have to be here. Although one person can participate remotely, provided that certain procedural requirements are met. But that otherwise, you know, your meeting has to be held in a place that is open to and accessible to members of the public. And by accessible, we mean accessible also to persons with disabilities. So you're not required to necessarily meet in town hall or even in a public building. But it has to be in a building that's open to and accessible to members of the public. So, you know, if there was some, some privately held property that you wanted to hold a meeting at and the person was willing to have you there, you could have your meeting. And again, but, you know, they couldn't limit access to only certain members. And, and it would have to be, you know, physically accessible to persons with disabilities as well. And then, you know, in addition to being, you know, open in the, you know, practical sense, it also has to be open in the physical sense in that, once you're here, you can't walk the doors. You know, people have to actually be able to get to your meeting. You can't, after your notice has been posted, change the location of the meeting without providing additional public notice. You know, if there is some emergency that, you know, requires you to move your meeting location, best practice would be to, to cancel it and repost. But, you know, if you really have to go forward with the meeting, you know, I would suggest, you know, put something on the website, post, repost the agenda as soon as possible, put notices on the door as to where the, the meeting is. And, you know, give people an opportunity to arrive there, you know, maybe, maybe start a little bit late or something like that. Likewise, once you have, you start a meeting, you cannot continue a meeting from, from day to day. So, you know, if you decide that Attorney Corbo went on forever with his open meeting law presentation, we're never gonna get through this agenda, let's just pick it up tomorrow, you can't do that. You'd have to post a new meeting, which would have to be posted forty-eight hours in advance. So sometimes if you know that, you know, your meeting is either likely to go long or, you know, maybe you're not sure about the weather. And you have a Monday meeting scheduled and, you know, there's a blizzard expected, you can also post a Tuesday meeting as well. And then you have that on the books, and if you don't need it, you could always cancel it. The final thing I would say is that, you know, if you're meeting in a location that has occupancy limits, if you reach your occupancy limit and more people want to attend, you have to close the meeting at that point. That's the equivalent of having a meeting in a closed location. Okay?
Mr. Belbin.
Yeah, again, something that happened to me is the shutting of the doors. That's important. I know sometimes someone walks in the door and they'll shut the door. But when you actually have an official shut the door so you can't hear what's going on, there's an issue with that. So we, we as members, if somebody hits the door and shuts the doors, we all have to make sure that those doors have to stay open. Like I said, when it happens to you, you're, you're a little more vigilant in saying it's not right that it happened. Because you may find out that they opened the meeting and then closed the hearing and voted, and you never got a chance to attend and be part of that and ask questions because the door was shut and you weren't allowed to go in because someone called the police on you.
Anyone else?
Quick question, what about, you mentioned, you know, if the meeting runs long, you can't just continue the meeting. What about with public, public hearings? Is it the same?
Well, so for public hearings, you have dual requirements. You have to comply with both the open meeting law and whatever substantive requirements there are for the public meeting, which might be notice to the applicant or notice in the newspaper or something like that. But generally speaking, you know, once you've provided statutory notice of a public hearing, that hearing can be continued from day to day without reposting notice. But those continuances have to be in forty-eight hour chunks because you still have to comply with the open meeting law. You get that?
No.
Okay, so, alright, so let's say you're, you're, you know, you're the, the ZBA and you have a variance hearing, right? That's going to require that certain notices be sent to a butters, right? That there be notice published in the newspaper, et cetera. So all that has to be done before the first hearing session. In addition to that, you also have to publish notice in accordance with the open meeting law. So you have to have a meeting notice published with the town clerk. If you fail to do either one of those things, your meeting is not valid. You can't go forward. But let's say you did both for the first day and the hearing goes long or you decide you need more information, so you wanna continue the public hearing. You can't just continue the public hearing to the next day because you still have to post again under the open meeting law with the town clerk. And so that means forty-eight hours notice in advance. Okay, so if your hearing, let's say is, you know, let's say your hearing is Tuesday night and it doesn't finish, well then first thing on Wednesday morning, you can post a meeting for Friday. That would be the best that you can do, but you couldn't just resume the next day. But what you don't have to do is re notify all of the butters. Okay?
There's, there's basically two, two notices that are actually with that. You have your notice of the special permit hearing, okay? And then we have the open meeting law notice. So, once you've complied with the special permit hearing notice and you've complied with the open meeting law of posting it, when you continue it to another day, you only have to comply with the open meeting law.
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hewens.
And I, I just wanted to make sure it's correct too, that when, when you're in the public hearing, specifically for those people who are in attendance from the public, you have to state a, not just a date, but a time and place as well specifically.
That's, that's correct. Yes, you do have to, to continue to a date and time certain. And of course, always being mindful of deadlines that you have to make decisions and all those rules still apply.
Anyone else? Alright, moving along.
Okay, so with, with respect to timing, you know, you're, you can hold, as long as you provide the forty-eight hour notice, you can have your meeting on any day of the week, at any hour of the day. You know, you're not required to necessarily have it at a time when, when it's convenient for members of the public. You can have your meetings at, at times that are convenient for you. And it's also important to understand that while the open meeting law guarantees the public the right to observe your meetings and your deliberations, it does not guarantee them a right to participate. And so, you know, you have a, a public participation part of your meeting, and that's fine. You're, you're permitted to do that. But you're not required to take public comments at any other points in your meeting. And you're not even required to have that public comment section. So, you know, the rules for public hearings are different, but for, for public business meetings, there is no right of participation. And, you know, the, the right of participation rests solely with the chair. Okay?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
The half.
So, the statement you just said, so the comments during regular agenda items, if the chair approves it, there can be comments made?
That's correct, if they go through the chair. But, you know, I mean, if you're, you know, you wanna think about how you wanna run your meetings, right? Cause so, the, the pitfalls here are twofold. First, you know, if you're going to start to allow public comment during agenda items, then it's gotta be fair. And you can't allow some people to speak and not others. But then the other side of that coin is that, once you allow the public to start participating in your deliberations on each item, you're never gonna finish your meetings in, in one day. Because your, your meetings will just end up lasting forever. So, you know, there's kinda like a, a push-pull there. And, and most boards find that the fair compromise is having this designated public participation section. So that the public has an opportunity to address the board, but the board also has an opportunity to get its business done without being interrupted.
And are most citizens' participations in the beginning of agendas?
I, I've seen a mix of both, either at the beginning or at the end.
Cause I know some of the comments that I've heard in the past for citizens' participation, you don't know how the, what, how the discussion for the board will be. So if you, if you have the citizens' participation, like we have, say there's something down at the eight forty-five mark or whatever. And then depending on what the board was discussing, it's kinda hard to, it's kinda hard for a citizens' participation if you don't know how the board's feeling. So that's why I like it at the end or in the middle after, especially if you have some sensitive issues coming up. I, I know we ran into this a few times with planning board and things like that. People wanted to comment and they're like, well, we haven't got to that yet, so hear us out first. And if we had discussed it and they heard that, probably would have answered all their questions and their comments. So I just, I wasn't sure if that was a, it had to be in the beginning.
Yeah, I know, it does not have to be in the beginning. Yeah, it could be beginning, middle, end. And, you know, you do hear, I think it's pretty common for it to be at the beginning. And oftentimes you'll hear, oh, well, at the last meeting, so-and-so said this. You know, because that's, that's the only time they have a chance to, to make their comments, and that's fine as well. So really it's just a matter of what is the preference of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Belbin.
Yeah, this, this board has actually done that both ways. We've had it at the beginning and we had it at the end. And, and either way, it, I mean, at the end, well, they've already made the decision and everything, so my comments don't mean anything. So it's a double-edged sword, if you have it in the beginning or the end, or you have it both. But still, it's just the fact that the beginning's probably better, that you can get people's comments, just my opinion.
There, there probably is no perfect answer, but I, I tend to agree with Mr. Belbin at least. If you have it at the beginning, it gives the public a chance to speak to things you might be discussing later on. Whereas if it's the end, you've already done it, right, so.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm not deferring. I actually like the idea of both ways. I've had that thought, kinda similar to Jim, because we continue a lot of stuff to the next meeting. So you have it in the beginning, someone's here, cause they're interested in what we're talking about. Then we talk about it, we say we'll continue the conversation. So at the end, someone can kinda give their input. And it's not like we're inundated with half an hour of people talking. So it may not be unreasonable to have, you know, the five minutes in the beginning and the five minutes at the end, just for an opportunity.
Mr. Corbo, why don't we get back to?
Yeah, I'm not getting involved in that discussion. Alright, and so before we move on to executive sessions, you know, it's also important to note that, you know, you know, when you're in your meeting, you should stick to the agenda. Again, you can sort of react to things that happen spontaneously, but, you know, as much as possible, stick to, to that specific agenda. So then we get into executive sessions. And, you know, you are authorized for certain enumerated purposes to conduct discussions in executive session outside of public earshot when those discussions will compromise some interest of the public body. It's important to note that only the specific exceptions written into the law are the permissible reasons. There is no catch-all. So one of the, the most frequently misunderstood lack of provisions is for negotiating contracts. You know, so like you may want to talk about your negotiations of a host community agreement or a pilot or something like that. And there is no provision in the law that just generally allows you to talk about contract negotiations. Or, you know, to discuss things that might be subject to attorney-client privilege. So it has to fit into one of the specific categories. You know, those categories include discussing reputation, character, physical condition or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints and charges against a public employee. Again, that's for the purpose of protecting the privacy of the individual, to conduct strategy sessions with respect to collective bargaining or, or non-union personnel, strategy with respect to litigation, the value or lease purchase of real property, things like that. So if you're going to go into executive session, it has to be on your agenda. As I said earlier, it's gotta state the specific purpose in all of the information that can be disclosed without jeopardizing the reason for the executive session. Once you get to your meeting, you have to convene your meeting in open session. Even if the only thing you're going to do is go into executive session, you still have to open your meeting in open session. You have to make a motion and a vote to go into executive session. And you have to announce whether or not you will be coming back to open session. Right? And so the motion must state all the same things that are in the meeting notice, meaning the specific exemption that you're using and the subject matter in as much detail as can be made. And some of the exemptions, like for example litigation, the chair also has to make a statement that discussing the matter in open session will have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Which is why with respect to the matter we spoke about earlier, I suggested we not go into executive session because the case had concluded. And so you no longer had a litigating position to protect and therefore no reason to talk about it in executive session. Once you're in executive session, you still have to take minutes. All of your votes have to be by roll-call vote. And you can only talk about the specific matter that you went into executive session for. So even if there is another matter that is permissible for executive session, you can't talk about it unless it was included in the notice and the vote. Okay? With respect to your minutes, your minutes may remain confidential for as long as the purpose of the executive session requires them to be. Which means that once the executive session purpose is completed, then those minutes have to be released to the public. And the board has an obligation to periodically review its minutes to see if in fact they can be released to the public. You can go into executive session to figure that out. And you can take votes in an executive session. But some votes require that they be ratified in open session. So for example, if you're voting on a, a contract for a non-union employee, you can talk about, you know, the terms of that agreement in executive session. But once you reach an agreement, then you have to vote in open session to approve that agreement. Okay?
Question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Font.
Going back to the, the practical issues with regard to the executive session notice, says the, you have to name the case name to be discussed under litigation strategy. It must be listed unless doing so would compromise the town's position. Can you give an example of when listing the matter would compromise the town's position? Can you give an example of when listing the matter would compromise the town's position?
Yes. Um, so, u- under the open meeting law, in addition to going into executive session to discuss pending litigation, you can also go into executive session to discuss prospective litigation. Um, as long as the threat of litigation is real and imminent. Um, and so, for example, um, you may need to decide whether or not you want to initiate litigation against a certain party. Um, and if that party knew that you were about to initiate litigation against them, they may, um, take action to thwart your claim. You know, maybe they'll shift their assets around or do something that, that makes it so that, you know, you're not able to secure a judgment against them. And so, you know, there are times when, you know, the fact of litigation in and of itself, if that were to be made public, could compromise your position. Um, but generally speaking, if litigation is already pending, the fact that you're going to talk about strategy in that litigation is not something that is confidential.
Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, um, the threat of litigation, is it just, do you have to have something tangible, like they send you a letter to say, hey, we're gonna threaten it? Or could it just be a verbal threat to say, we're gonna sue you?
So, you know, it depends on how credible the threat is. So it can't just be like an, an imagined, um, threat. Um, you know, so I mean, like, you know, people can, you know, sort of say things in the heat of a conversation, you know, oh, I'm gonna sue you over that. But they don't really mean that they're gonna do that. But you know, if it's something where, you know, you legitimately believe that if you don't take action, that you're gonna end up in litigation, then that is something that you can go into executive session over, even though it hasn't started yet. Um, you know, so for example, you might be involved in a, a permitting situation where you know that whatever decision you reach is gonna end you up in litigation. Or maybe reaching one decision versus another will, will help you avoid that. Then, you know, you can go into executive session and say, all right, you know, what are our options here? Um, to, to help set us up best for litigation. Obviously, you can't make your decision about whatever permit is at issue in executive session, but you can have a discussion with council about, you know, what are the consequences of going down one route versus going down another in terms of litigation? Um, you know, likewise with respect to real estate, um, if it was known that the town was considering purchasing, um, a parcel of, of land, might that have an impact on other potential buyers? Um, and, and would that affect your negotiating position? Maybe. And so in that case, then it would be appropriate to not disclose that information before you have your executive session.
Thank you.
Right?
Anyone else? All right, moving right along.
All right, so then we get into meeting minutes. Um, so all of your meetings, whether in open or executive session, have to have minutes kept. The minutes have to include the date, time, location of the meeting, members who were present and who were absent, um, a listing of any documents that were used at the meeting, um, and a description of each of the topics that was discussed. Um, and so, you know, much like your meeting notice, your meeting minutes have to be sufficiently detailed so that a member of the public who was not at the meeting can look at the minutes and have an idea of what was discussed. Um, you know, there's no bright line rule of what constitutes sufficient specificity. It's what is reasonable under the circumstances. Um, you don't need a word-for-word transcript of everything that was said and by who. Um, but, you know, it needs to be enough that, you know, someone can, can get the gist of what happened. Certainly to identify any votes that were taken. Um, and, you know, sort of like a, a general rule of thumb is that, you know, if you have a meeting that lasted two hours and you have two lines in your meeting minutes, they're probably not detailed enough. Okay, so, y- you know, it's, it's gotta be enough to, to give someone a, a good sense of, of what, what went on so that if they weren't able to be there, they can catch up just by reading the minutes.
Now, um, with the minutes, there's different, um, with a special permit, um, those need to be detailed and accurate for those meeting, meeting minutes. Cause there's a difference between a regular meeting where you just have a little description about, hey, okay, this is what was discussed. All right, but when you hit to a special permit, you're supposed to be a little more detailed into what you get in there. And same with, um, executive session minutes. They should be detailed and accurate also, a little more than what you would a normal meeting.
So as to the, the first point, um, you know, for, you know, again, if you have requirements for issuance of a special permit where you're required to make findings, um, then yes, you're going to need more detail. Um, but again, the minutes exist separately from whatever decision is made. Um, on executive session, you know, I think, yeah, you, you know, you probably want to put a little bit more detail in there. Um, but then, you know, when it comes time to releasing those minutes, you want to take a, a closer look and decide, okay, you know, are there things in there that are subject to attorney-client privilege? And even though the, the general topic is resolved, you know, there are certain things that our attorney told us that should not be made public at this time. And, and so when you release your minutes, you do have the option of redacting things that are not necessarily suitable for release.
Thank you.
Right? And so, um, with respect to the minutes, um, you know, the, the minutes are, are public records um, immediately upon their creation. And so, you know, if there's a request for the minutes, even if they haven't been approved, if they exist in draft form, they're subject to release as a public record. Um, at that point, they can be stamped draft. Um, the, the minutes, um, need to be approved in a timely manner. Um, and that's defined as within the next three meetings of the board or within thirty days, whichever is later. Um, boards that, that meet infrequently might have a, have a bigger problem with this, but you know, as a general rule of thumb, I suggest that, um, I'm sorry to say this, Elaine, but, um, that you have a, a standing agenda item to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Um, I think if you, if you can do that, then, you know, you're not gonna have any issues with not having your, your meetings be approved um, in a timely manner. Um, once the minutes are approved, then the draft minutes can be thrown away. Um, likewise, if the, um, if the recording clerk makes a, um, a, a recording of the meeting for purposes of help, helping them draft the minutes, once the draft minutes are created, the recording can be disposed of or taped over. Um, there's no need to keep that unless, again, there is a public records request for it before it's, um, destroyed or lost.
So we don't have to keep all the old recordings of the meeting, meetings as long as we have the minutes?
That's correct. So I know it's starting to get long. I don't know if you want to get into enforcement at this point. I mean, we've been down that, that road before.
Yeah, I think, I think we have.
Yeah.
Do, do any members of the board have any specific questions?
Just, just one is, um, it says, uh, has to be, a complaint process has to be within thirty days of the alleged violation. Wasn't the old, I don't know if it's changed, but it's when you first could know about it, when it happened, because say if a violation happened in executive session, you don't know until those meeting minutes come up. Say, oh my God, there was, there was a violation of the open meeting law and so that's still is inactive is that it's when you knew or potentially could know that it had happened.
Well, right, that's the thing. So it's when you knew or should have known. And so if a, if a violation occurs at a public meeting, it's known right then and there. And just because you didn't watch the meeting doesn't mean you didn't know about it, right? Um, but if there is an unknowable violation, like for example, members communicating over email and that email doesn't come to light until a year later, then their, their time starts to run for thirty days after the email comes to light. Um, so it is a, it is a more of an objective standard, a reasonable person's standard. Um, but it is, if it does happen in a public meeting, then it's knowable right then and there and the thirty days starts right away.
Thank you. Any, anything else for Mr. Corbo? Oh, Mr. Corbo, thank you very much for coming down and doing this. I know that this is something the board has been looking forward to for a long time.
Yes, no, I'm happy to help and, you know, I'm always here to answer questions. Um, and, you know, if you ever find yourself, you know, in uncertain waters, it's always easier to, to ask and get an answer upfront than to have to defend against a complaint.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving right along, we took that a little bit out of order, so we'll go back to citizens' participation. Are there any members of the, of the public that would like to address the board tonight? Seeing none. We will move along to a discussion and possible vote on the select board goals and objectives and whether or not to use a facilitator. So this is something we addressed last year as well. Um, and we obviously have the, the same board that was here last year. But I'm interested in hearing the board's thoughts on, on goals and objectives for the year.
Well, um, I mean, I don't have any specific goals to propose tonight.
Jen, use your mic.
So. I don't have any specific goals to propose tonight, but I know last year after Jim and I were elected, we weren't part of any goals process. So I would love for us to set new goals together. And I know in the past I asked, uh, you and Sarah if you thought a facilitator was worthwhile and you thought, not sure, but I'm kind of interested in maybe doing it too. Um, so I'd be open to doing that. And yeah, I hope we do do goals, cause we didn't last year, so.
Well, I, I guess my thought on the goals and objectives was that we wouldn't so much discuss the goals tonight, but whether we wanted to schedule a time at a future meeting to discuss those. And, and I thought perhaps each individual member of the, of the board could think about two, two or three goals that they might have for the year and perhaps could email them to, to Elaine. And, um, and then we could, we could schedule something for a future meeting. And I guess, uh, I, I know we had a discussion last year about a facilitator and I think the, the, the will of the board was that they didn't particularly feel they needed one, but things change. And I just felt it was an appropriate time to, to discuss that again. Um, does anyone else have any, any thoughts on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Belvin?
Um, I think we need goals. I mean, I have my own thought process on what should we be doing here? Should we be a reactor, reactionary board that we just react to whatever comes before us? Or we be proactive on certain things that we can foresee that may be in the future coming forward? Um, and I think we should have to do both. But we have to have those processes that we want those goals and objectives. So we really do need to have a discussion of them. And, um, uh, like I said, it's, it's really difficult to turn around and, and work on something and whatnot and it not be done and, um, we have to move forward with that. We have to go forward and we have to have some goals of what we're gonna do over the next year.
All right, and that's how we also, by our residents' standards to say, are you working in the best interest of our town and what are you doing for my town? So, um, that's my opinion. I think it would be a good, good option. I didn't think the facilitator was really worthwhile, to be honest. I think. And just remember, there are other facilitators. Uh, so there are, there are more than one and you know, I'm, like I said, I, I don't really have an opinion one way or the other, but I, I thought I'd listen to what the board thought. Any other thoughts? Ms. Yon?
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, I, obviously we need goals and objectives. I mean, I think that goes without saying. And I think maybe we should pick a time to discuss those when there's not a lot of other action on the agenda, cause that could take a while. Um, and as to the facilitator, if we do use one, I'd like to, um, pick someone different from the one we had previously.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman?
I definitely think the goals and objectives is, is a good idea. Like Jen said, we didn't really have that advantage to do that last year, so we're, we're a year in the making here on this. And, um, I think we should use a facilitator. We didn't have the experience for the last person and obviously it's, it didn't go over too well, while that person didn't do as good as everyone expected, but I think we should try it, someone else.
I, I think, I think sometimes a facilitator can help, help the discussion a little bit. Um, and I also obviously think it's important to have goals and objectives. So would the board be okay with, say, each of us choosing, say, not more than three? Goals and objectives, we'll email them into Elaine. Uh, Mr. LaFawn, perhaps you could look into some different, uh, facilitators? And we can schedule a, a meeting. We have, the next couple of meetings are gonna be pretty heavy, but maybe farther, a little farther into the summer, we can schedule a date to, uh, to discuss this. Everyone okay with that?
Yep, that sounds good.
Yeah.
All right.
Can, um, can we get, um, a list of those facilitators that, um, are out there for this type of, um, thing to do with our town and the selectmen, I mean?
I don't know that there's a, uh, you know, you know, it's not like a witness list. I don't think you can just get, you know, there's a list of facilitators, but there are organizations, there are certainly, um, you know, I don't know that this is the route, but there's certainly people I know, retired town manager types and, um, so there are people who I know do this, provide this service. Um, but in terms of compiling a list, that could be, um,
It's also not something I think any of us individually are gonna have a lot of experience with. You know, we're not gonna probably know these folks.
Right.
I, I think the will is, of the board is that we, we use a different facilitator than we did last time.
Yeah.
So, um, but, but see, see what you can do to find, to find a few folks and, uh, we'll, we'll schedule this for a future meeting. A little bit farther down the road. Any other thoughts on that before we move along? All right. Uh, let's see. That brings us to the discussion and possible vote on the Town Administrator Screening Committee. Uh, whether or not to include the three additional applicants that were received after the deadline, the composition of the committee, number of members, uh, interviews, and the charge of the committee. And, and I thought perhaps it might help us to, to move this along if we, if we worked on individual items and came to an agreement and then moved to the next item. Uh, if the board is okay with that. So I guess the first item is whether or not to include the three additional applicants that were received after the deadline.
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman, please?
Mr. Belvin.
Um, so I don't know about any of the members, but I have no idea, uh, who's applied to be on this committee. Um, I know of two people that they just sent me notice, just let me know, hey, I'm, I'm doing that. So I know of two, but other than that, I don't know who has applied. So I don't know if any of the other members do know who's applied. I think, I just wanted the public to understand that.
Yeah, and I, I think we're all sort of in the same position. I mean, I, I know myself, a couple of people have reached out to me similar to yourself to say, hey, just wanted to let you know that I'm gonna send in an application. Whether they did or not, I don't know. But, and, um, and once we set up the composition, Ms. Weston will be sending out all the applications for the board to review.
I just want that disclosure put out there before we start making decisions that people think that, oh, well, because
I understand.
Because it was me, I didn't get, I don't even know who you are.
Right.
All right, so just wanna make it clear.
Right, and of course, we're not gonna be voting on any individual members tonight anyway.
So, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Yon?
Are you looking for, uh, comments about whether or not to include the three additional applicants that came in after the deadline?
I am.
So, uh, my feeling on this is pretty strong. I think that we have deadlines for a reason. I, I think it was very clear when the deadline was and in the posting, it even said the time will be the time that reads on the clock in the select board office. So that there was no confusion. Someone couldn't come in and say, well, you know, my, your, your clock is fast or something. Um, and, and I just think you have it, you have that, and again, I'm, I'm the same as you guys. I know a couple of people have told me they were going to. I don't know if they actually did. And I don't know who was, any of the rest of them are and certainly not those who were late. I have no clue. So I, I just think it's a question of fairness and, um, it's only right to those who stuck with the deadline and, you know. it's only right to those who stuck with the deadline and, you know, applied the way they were supposed to.
Yeah, Mr. Belvin.
I, I actually agree. We had a timeframe there, and that's it. We did that with the, um, town meeting warrant. Didn't get it in time. Sorry, I'm not in on time. So.
And we actually held ourselves to that same standard.
We, we did, so. Mr. Hoffman, I believe.
I, I was the one that originally brought that question up, just full disclosure there. Originally, I thought that I'd asked Elaine when the people had done it late, and it was like an hour or two afternoon. But the more I thought about it, I agree with what Sarah and Bob had said, that there was a deadline, we should stick to it. It's, if not, it would, we'd set a bad precedent. It's not like the meeting was posted a week before. There was a month previous notice, so I, I agree that we have to stick to the, um, to the noon deadline.
Ms. Bogart?
I concur.
And, and I, I agree as well. Would somebody be willing to make a motion to, to reject those three applications?
I'll make a motion not to include the three additional applicants that were received after the deadline. Applications for the Town Administrator Screening Committee.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? It is unanimous. All right. That brings us to the composition of the screening committee. Any thoughts? Ms. Bogart?
All right, I got my research. Okay. Okay, so first thing, Fairhaven, amazing description on their website of their screening committee, and they're actively recruiting someone as of late March. That's their latest, uh, agenda posting that I saw. So they have a super detailed thorough description of what their screening committee should be, what they expect of them. So I would love us to look at that as an example. So then I have just examples of things. So they have seven members on their committee. One from the Finance Committee, one from the School Committee, one from the Planning Board, one from the Select Board, two citizens at large, and then something they call a community rep. NADIC has one that's nine members. So the Planning Board, School Committee, Finance Committee, Personnel Board, and Moderator can all designate one person, but it doesn't have to be someone from that board. And then the Select, the Select Board does the official appointing. So none of those bodies appoint them, they just delegate. And then the Select Board chooses everyone else to get to the nine members. So they had nine. Topsfield has seven members. Stowe has five members, and they were active in 2020 also. Boxford was interesting, because they're actually, uh, they formed their committee very recently, because their town administrator is retiring in August. So that was interesting. And they actually held a community public forum with their screen, sorry, that's getting off the numbers, but they held a public forum with their screening committee to solicit input, feedback, and comments as part of their recruitment process, and they posed two questions to the public. What experience and characteristics do you consider essential for a town administrator? And what challenges will the town face in the immediate future and in ten years? But I don't know how many members they have, but they're in the game now. The town of Wenham appointed their screening committee this past January. They have seven members, and there's a good description of their committee expectations on their website. Holliston has six members. Wellfleet has five. Millbury has nine. Lexington also has a good committee charge on their website, and you know, if we're looking to get deep. They have eleven members. Two Select Board, one former Select Board, one Diversity Advisory Task Force rep, one from the School Committee, one from the Planning Board, one from the Economic Development Advisory Committee, a former town senior manager, a business rep, and then two town meeting representatives, which equates to two citizens. And that's all I got, so.
Thank, thank you for all that research.
Yeah.
Ms. Bogart. And I, and before we move along, I just wanna publicly thank, uh, Ms. Weston for all the research she did on this.
Definitely.
As well, and you can see by your packets how much, uh, how much she did. So, so thank you, Ms. Weston.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Ms. Yhuns?
Mrs. Bogart, what was the first town you mentioned?
Fairhaven. They were the best. They were amazing. So thorough in what they expect from their screening committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Belvin.
So, um, are you asking for our opinion on the makeup of it as of how many people?
I think, I think by the time we leave this meeting tonight, I think I'd like to know what the composition of the committee, not the individuals, but whether we want at-large members, or members from different committees, how many members, yes, all, all those things.
Okay, 'cause my, what I've been thinking, and this is just me, is that, um, the committee should be seven to nine members, just my opinion. And then, like Fairhaven, and so is the FinCom, the school, the planning. I'm not too sure about the Select Board, if we should have one of us be part of that, if we're gonna be voting for that person, yes or no? I personally feel that we shouldn't. Three community representatives, and I'd like somebody within an HR background. Just, like I said, it's just something that, um, we may need to turn around and, because they may have a different opinion in how they look at a, a new hire coming in. So that's my thought process. So I, like I said, I'd, seven would be my minimum, nine would be my maximum. Kinda like the seven, to be honest. But I'd also wanna see as much people that are interested, um, in this. It'd be really interesting to see who has the, those other qualities within it, because we don't know who the makeup is of those people that we have applied. So, and how many of those would actually fit into this, but I'd like to see two or three from our community.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Hoffman.
Okay. I would like to see seven members. I don't, I think nine's a little bit too much, but I agree, seven's, seven's a good number. And I like the idea with the, someone from the Finance Committee, someone from the School Committee, someone from the Planning Board, and also someone from the local business community. Whether that, whether we restrict, narrow it down to a cranberry grower or someone in the cranberry business. But I think that's important, especially with the town. And then, and then three at-large members that would, I guess, that's, that's the tough part, is that chosen by us, the Select Board.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The three at-large members, so three would be cho-
What was the last part of that sentence?
Chosen by the Select Board.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Yhuns?
Thank you. Um, I would like to see at least two Finance Committee members. One School Committee member, one Planning Board. And I like the idea of one former Select Board person who has maybe more experience than some of us. So one former Select Board member.
No, I'm sorry, did you say a former Select Board?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, like, um, what was the town? Lexington. Lexington had that. Two members at large. And I would like, I think it's very important, particularly in Carver, because we are very unique in our public safety departments. I'd like to see at least two public safety officials on the committee. So, so mine's up to nine. It, it is tough, but I don't think it should be bigger than that, so.
Ms. Bogart, do you have thoughts regarding the, the number you feel comfortable with, or?
Kind of general same. Um, I, I know Elaine had listed some, and when I took my webinar, which I talked about, they had public safety officials in, so maybe not mandate the chiefs to, but extend the opportunity to them if they want to participate. Not say, okay, Chief Doofly, you're in, but offer it. Um, you're laughing at me, mister? But I do hesitate at the two Finance Committee, because that kind of gives them more weight. So I kind of, if we're going to include specialties, I think one from each committee or board we're including would be good. But in general, I'm very consistent in thought to everybody else, so.
I think it's important that we remember, we don't know who the, and I'm sorry, Mr. LaFawn, were there sixteen applicants? Is that the total number?
I, I have stayed away from it, mister.
So, so of those sixteen applicants, we may find when we see those, those applications that there are Finance Committee members, there are School Committee members. So we, we may designate that we want the FinCom to appoint somebody, but then we go, when we go to at-large people, we may find there's another FinCom member in there or something. That shouldn't necessarily, I don't think, exclude them just because they, they applied.
Technically, we couldn't appoint them because of the Finance Committee bylaw. Unless they're representing the Finance Committee, we couldn't take someone else, right? Because the Finance Committee bylaw says you can't be a member of other town committees.
This is not a permanent committee, though.
Yeah, it's not a permanent committee, and
Does the by, I mean, we had that big discussion. I guess we'd have to go back and look at it.
I mean-
And it also doesn't involve finance.
I think that would be a question for Greg, just so everybody's comfortable one way or the other.
Okay, well, why don't you, why don't you make a note to, to, to ask him, but I, I mean, I, I mean, this is not a permanent town committee. This is a, just a temporary committee, so I don't know.
Hey, that bylaw was a big topic of discussion, so.
We should find out. We should know prior to making any appointments. So, although I think that's a, an excellent idea, and I just, my own, my own thoughts, I, I was thinking seven members would be a good number. I, I guess I could go to nine, but I, 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 I thought seven would be good. I, I think we should have someone from FinCom, someone from the school. I agree with someone from planning. I don't know about the former Select Board member. I, I don't know about that. I think it's important that we have at-large members of the public. I also think that we need different, um, demographics. I'd like, like Jim, I'd like to see somebody associated with the business community in town. I'd like to see a member of the senior population in town represented, I think. But, but those are at-large members, and, and we're all, we're all make our appointments there, or our, our thoughts. So why don't we, why don't we try to make a decision on a number? I think, let's, let's make a decision on a number, and then, once we get the number, we can decide what the, what the makeup of that committee would be.
I'll make a motion that we have seven members for the screening committee for Town Administrator.
We have a motion for seven members. Is there a, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
That's okay.
Okay.
Could I make, could I make another motion?
Uh, well, I, I think we should deal with the motion that we have.
All right.
And then, go forward.
I think we should have a base committee of seven, but be willing to go up to nine if the police chief or fire chief want to participate.
Or, or the-
Or the, or the EMS chief.
Any of the-
So then maybe go up to ten. Seven definite, with the option to go to ten if-
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no.
I think it's important that we have an odd number.
I think it has to be seven or nine, yeah.
Okay. So then the chiefs get to decide amongst themselves who, the two that get to go. So seven, and then up to two public safety officials if they choose to participate. But if they don't, it's just seven. We're not gonna take an extra citizen at large to get to eight. It's seven structured, and then the optional two public safety.
Public safety.
I'll, I'll make a motion to appeal, uh, appeal, yeah. To change my, um, my motion to say seven members and plus two public safety. Whoever, which, if they want to, they can, or they don't, they can.
So, so you're suggesting that we leave that up to them?
Leave it up, leave it up to them. If they wanna be part of it, then they can. If they don't, they don't.
Yep. I think that's, that's a good idea.
So I think the only important thing there would be that we make sure we have two of them, not just one, because-
Well, there are four, there are four public safety departments, so, well, I guess you could say O and M is one as well, but I meant, I meant police, fire, EMS, and emergency management director.
I, I just think it's important we end up with seven or nine, not eight, not-
Absolutely.
That's all.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion for seven, a seven-member screening, screening committee, plus two public safety officials. I'm sorry, was there a second in that motion?
Well, I'll amend my second to his amended motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Hoffman.
Two questions, and that'll help me decide about the number that we'd like. I just thought of, for the, for the makeup of the committee. Should we have a former screening committee member that was on the committee from the last time?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, see, this is why I was thinking of having a former Select Board member. Just someone who has a history that maybe some of us here don't have. I mean, even when I was a Select Board member before, I was also an employee. So I, I couldn't, I didn't have any, I didn't deliberate in that whole process, so that was, that was the reason, really, just to be clear, why I threw that one in, but I think since we've amended it to include the public safety officials, that, that helps too, because these people have been around a long time. So.
I, I think it would be, I'm not sure we can mandate that, but I, I think if we had the opportunity, it would be a great idea to have somebody with some experience in the process on the committee.
But they can apply at large, too.
They, they can.
You know, that's true.
They can, and that-
Or they could have.
They could have, and then- And then maybe someone, you know, we could reach out to, just like the public safety officials that we could, we could, we could find, so.
I have, I have another question. Jen just brought up a good point, so the deadline to submit has passed. So what if the people fifteen, well, obviously, there wouldn't be fifteen that were Fin, FinCom, School, Planning Board, so the three at large, or whatever number we say we come up with, three at large, has to come from the people that have already applied? Correct?
I guess so.
Well, I, I mean, you know, we-
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question that might help with that?
Absolutely.
So, when we decide whether or not we're going to interview, supposing we interview all sixteen applicants and we don't, we're not satisfied with enough to make up a seven-member plus-two committee, then what do we do?
Well, that, that's a, that's a good question. I have, especially with some of the thoughts we've had about perhaps a, a former Select Board member, or, or a member of the business community or what, we don't, we don't know who the applicants are, I think.
But I mean, I guess what I was getting at was, in that case, it seems to me, and I could be wrong, but in that case, we could say, we wanna add this former, a former Select Board member, or we wanna add a cranberry grower.
Yeah, I think, I think the bylaw just suggests or says that there'll be a screening committee. It doesn't say who or how the screening committee will be composed of. It doesn't say any of that. So we could certainly, I think, any Select Board member could suggest that this person or that person be on the, be on the screening committee, and we, we take a vote.
That was my feeling.
And as far as the, um, the different committees, ones like the FinCom, School Committee, Planning Board, we're not necessarily narrowing it to the chairperson that's just a member of that board. Is that?
Yes, but, but again, all we're talking about right now is just-
Right, I'm, I'm just trying to figure the, the number in my head that I wanna-
Well, actually, that's a very good question, Mr. Chair, because that we probably should talk about that. If we're not narrowing it to the chairperson of whatever board we're talking about here. Can it also be a designee of, say, the Planning Board decides to designate somebody?
Well, that was, that was my thought. So my thought, we have, we have two weeks until our next meeting, when hopefully we'll appoint the screening committee. So that gives any board that we suggest tonight that they get a member of, I, I would think enough time for Mr. LaFawn. If they don't have a regular meeting scheduled, perhaps you could instruct them that, hey, the, the Select Board has suggested that you have a, a member of the screening committee, could you schedule a short meeting to, to choose your appointee? And that, that appointee, I think, from what I've looked into in different towns, would be subject to approval by the Select Board.
Mm-hmm, yep.
You're, but you're specifically looking for each slot, each committee that you're requesting participation from to nominate from their own board?
Yeah, well, just if, if the, if the Select Board chooses not to appoint the chairman, just to, uh, just for lack of a board, the, the FinCom, to say, okay, we want a member from the FinCom to be a member of the screening committee, then the FinCom would have to hold a meeting to, to nominate a member, so we could know at our next meeting. But I think that would be-
And does that person have to be one of the ones who applied?
I, I wouldn't think so.
Okay, that was what I was kinda getting at, yeah.
Fill slots, and then, okay, let me get this straight.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. And I guess the only other consideration I, I would have, but I guess we could do this when we appoint people, do we wanna consider one or two alternate members, just in case we choose somebody who ultimately, something happens and they can't participate? Do we wanna consider an alternate member or not?
So, so here's a question to your question, if I may. So here's a question to your question, if I may. Supposing the school committee, I'm just making this up. Supposing the school committee has no one on it who wants to be on this committee, but they want someone who used to have something to do with the school or was on a former school committee. It seems like that should be their choice, too, right? Is that, that's just my feeling, I mean...
Mr. Chair, that's kind of going back to what NADIC does. They give those boards the chance to designate a person, but it doesn't have to be someone on the board. It's just kind of their proposal. We would like you, the Select Board, to appoint this person. This would be our designee. But, I mean, they're usually coming from the board, but to touch her point...
Say they want to appoint their business manager.
NADIC does allow each board to just choose a designee and not mandate that it be someone on that board?
That was what I was...
Just as an example.
Yep.
Mr. Belbin?
Here we go again. I'll make a motion that we give committees two weeks to submit a name for the screening committee.
Well, I'm sorry, but it should be less than two weeks, because we have a meeting in two weeks.
Within two weeks.
Okay.
Within two weeks. And that the committee can designate a member or someone other than a member to be their representative.
For recommendation.
For recommendation.
Because we're the appointers.
Right. The only thought I would have on that, and it's probably not going to happen, but I think whoever's on the screening committee has to be a resident of the town.
Oh, yeah.
Must be a resident of the town. I'll add that to my motion.
Well, we already have a motion for the number. We haven't voted on that yet, right?
That's right. Yeah, we have, all we're trying to write now is get a motion for the number. We have the discussion of the number, and I know it all plays into it. But I think we have to come up with how many members we're going to have on the screening committee.
I thought we'd...
No, we haven't voted on it.
Oh, we haven't voted. You're right, you're right, you're right.
And then we went to discussion. So I think we have, if memory serves me now, we have a motion for seven members plus two from the public safety departments, right? So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
And then Mr. Belbin added, and that that particular committee can designate someone even if that person's not on their...
I was a little premature. I was a little premature with that one, I'm sorry.
We're just voting on the number right now.
Gotcha.
So is there any further discussion on the number? Hearing none. All in favor of a seven-member screening committee plus two members from the public safety departments?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
No.
I just want to clarify. When you said public safety, you meant police, fire, EMS, or EMA?
EMS and EMA.
Not O and M?
No.
Not O and M, although they are, but it's not the type of public safety that we...
You just want one of the chiefs, two of the chiefs.
Right, two of the four chiefs.
All right, so that brings us to the makeup of the screening committee. And I know we've had a lot of discussion on that already. Is there a motion for what the makeup of the screening committee should be?
So I think Mr. Belbin had that motion.
I think you did. I'm not sure we got through the... Could you make the motion again, Mr. Belbin?
Okay, well, I didn't have the makeup of the actual grouping of the departments. Do you want my opinion for that? What do you want? Okay. Let me go back my note, sorry. My original was one FinCom, one school, one planning. School planning, I added, no. Three community at-large, and I wanted one with HR. So can we kind of discuss?
Absolutely.
For these, because, I mean, if we can just go like one at a time that we all, like, is everyone in favor of?
I think that's a good idea.
FinCom?
Is everyone in favor of one member from the FinCom?
Yes.
All right. Is everyone in favor of one member from the school committee?
Yes.
Or their designee?
Or their designee, yeah.
Yes.
I don't like the "and" or "designee" because we're picking a school committee so that if it's not one of the school committee members, the elected school committee members, they could choose someone who basically is an at-large person.
Correct.
I think that's a good point.
Well, but it's also true that supposing none of them, and I'm not saying this is true. I'm just, I'm not trying to, I'm sure they're all very capable. But I'm just saying, supposing none of them felt that they knew enough about finance, for example, and they wanted to appoint their business, their financial person.
But he doesn't live in town.
Excuse me? Supposing he did live in town, okay? Or a former one, or like that, someone who does that and lives in town. That might be the person that they would prefer to see rather than one of themselves. And we don't have to pick on the school committee, supposing it's...
I'm not just saying this, yeah. I just think we all pick these committees for a reason, committees and boards for a reason. We want to have a good cross-section of people, of elected officials.
I know, speaking for myself, I, that was my thought when I started talking about the committees as well. I'd like, when I talk about a member from the FinCom or whatever committee, I think it should be a member of the committee. And if no one from that committee is willing to serve, well, then we have sixteen applicants at-large that we could choose from. And if we're not satisfied with those folks, there's no reason that a member of the Select Board couldn't make a motion to appoint somebody.
Seems reasonable.
So I, well, I think, just speaking for myself, when we appoint someone from a committee, I think it should be someone from the committee.
Well, last ditch effort. So the Select Board frequently does that ourselves. We will appoint someone who's not currently on the Select Board, that maybe was on the Select Board and was doing X in the past, and we keep appointing them to do that. And Select Board's representative, I think, to Serped is none of us, you know? So I mean, there's a case to be made for appointing someone who we think really knows more about the subject than we do.
But we could do that anyway. The school committee could suggest to any of us that, sorry, no one's willing to serve, but we'd like this person to serve in their stead. And we could consider that a person and still appoint them.
That's true.
So none of this stops us from doing that.
And I don't know how we could word it, but if, say, the school committee, I don't want to keep picking on the school committee. Say the FinCom decides, nobody wants to do that, that their member now becomes an at-large. So the at-large would go from three to four. So I think that would be fair and open it up. I mean, I'm hoping each committee's going to have a member that would want to, but if not...
I think, I think when, if we were to come back in two weeks to vote on the makeup, the actual members of the committee, and someone would come back and say, I'm sorry, but the FinCom put it out there to the members and no one chose to serve in the screening committee, then yeah, we, as a, we come back and we look at the pool of applicants, and we consider, okay, is there anyone here? Another person we want to appoint at large, and if not, again, any member could choose to appoint somebody, to recommend somebody for inclusion in the screening committee. So...
I just didn't know if we had to, on the motion we're about to make for the makeup of the committee, if we had to include that, because if we don't, do we have to stick to it has to be a school committee or FinCom?
Yeah, I agree. We should allow them to come back to us and say, none of our board wants to do it. We recommend that you appoint X.
I agree. Does the board think that we should take individual motions on, you know, one member of Committee A, one member of Committee B individually? Or should we do it all at once? What's the will of the board?
Well, I think we had a consensus so far, right?
I think we do.
We have one FinCom, one school committee. But I think, to Jim's point, that if we don't put in the motion that whatever particular board has the option to come back to us and say, none of us want to do it. We want you guys to consider appointing John Smith.
Yeah, I think it's a member of the board. I think that's the motion I was just developing.
I was just writing that out to try to kind of get everything together. And basically what I came is, if not appointed from a committee, I'm sorry. If not appointed from a committee and at-large from the committee aboard, the appointment goes to the Select Board. I messed that up anyways, but the intent was if these boards, that they don't appoint somebody from the board, instead of it going to someone that they can appoint, it reverts back to us. Their appointment reverts back to us. That's what I tried to get out of there. It just didn't come out right.
We could probably word something to say a member of the Finance Committee or the Select Board's designee, a member of the school committee or the Select Board's designee. Just something to, if they don't appoint somebody, then it comes back to us. And we fill the spot as we see fit. I would think something like that is the easiest way to do it. But I think we're all sort of in favor of someone from FinCom, someone from the school. How about the planning board?
Yes.
Is she one's?
Yes, I'm in favor of that. I thought you were asking us.
Everyone else?
I like the idea of a business community person. I'd like to see that, too.
Okay. I like the idea of someone representing the business community as well. All right, so we have Finance, School...
Have we decided on Planning Board? Are we having one person from the Planning Board?
One person from the Planning Board.
And that would leave us with three at-large?
Yep, a member of the business community.
Can I, when we say business community, is that just someone who like owns a business? Or can we focus on someone who's a local business owner?
Yes, local business.
Okay.
My opinion is they have to be a carver business ear.
Well, I think it could be a local business owner. It could be someone who perhaps is retired but had, had business experience. That could even be better, because if you have someone that had the experience, but they have no conflict. So, but I think you need somebody who has some experience in the business of carver. And I think that's an important part of it. So I think we are just about there.
And then plus the two safety officers.
Plus the, that's right.
The public safety.
Do we want to restrict that to chiefs, or could it be, or their designee?
Chiefs.
I think it should be chiefs.
Okay. All right, so we have consensus, I think, on a member. A FinCom member or the designee, a school committee member.
That's an additional person?
So a FinCom member or their designee?
Their designee.
A school committee member?
A school committee member or the designee.
Okay.
A planning board member or their designee. Well, no, I'm sorry, a FinCom member or that comes back to the Select Board.
Okay.
Can I suggest some wording?
Yes.
The FinCom member, the three specific committees, and then the little asterisk. If the aforementioned committees or boards fail to designate one of its own members, the opening defaults back to the Select Board.
To the Select Board. I think that's excellent wording, Ms. Bogart.
Can you repeat that, though?
I think that could, actually. That one wasn't too complicated for me.
Review the minutes when it comes.
Very good.
Reproduce this.
Okay, so we have those three boards, a member from the business community, and three at-large, plus the two public safety chiefs. So I think we need a motion to that effect. I don't think we have that motion. All right, let's see if I can do this. All right.
Do you want me to read what I have and then you can say motion?
Okay, we'll see what you have there, too.
You can motion that the makeup of the screening committee be one member of the Finance Committee, one member of the school committee, one member of the planning committee, three at-large members, and one member from the business community. If the aforementioned committees or boards fail to appoint a member, the Select Board will appoint a member in their place.
I'll make that motion. Thank you very much, Elaine. I appreciate it.
Can I just point out one thing, just to make it clear? That as an example, the planning board member to be proposed from the planning board, not necessarily, doesn't have to be somebody who's already, may have already applied. So I think it has to be clear that it's a designee of that board nominated to this board. It's not...
Yes.
I think it's going to be clear that it is somebody suggested by their board, by a vote of the...
Absolutely. It doesn't have to be somebody that's one of the at-large.
It's a member of the board.
Maybe that should be added to the motion.
Designated by the board, though.
Say this again, Rick.
Designated by the...
I haven't quite got there yet. But, you know, rather than just a planning board member who may be in the, one of the applicants, I think you're looking for each of these boards to designate one of their own.
Right.
That's right.
So just add the word "current."
Current, that's...
Right, but I think, as opposed to just, I thought it was just a little bit unclear, even though I know your intent, a little bit unclear as to whether or not the individual boards are selecting, proposing their own member. Or if it was just every member of every board could apply to this board for you to decide what member of what board.
Yeah, I think they have a meeting. That individual board has a meeting, and they choose somebody to nominate to the Select Board. Mr. Belbin?
So, I'm not sure if you were trying to get to this, Rick, but are you saying that a planning board, they decide, okay, yeah, we're going to pick one of our players, okay? But somebody else on that board has also put their name in the hat to be an at-large? Is that what you're trying?
Two different things, right.
Two different things, right, okay.
I just think it's clear that the member from the planning board, that you're looking for a member, you had a slot to fill from the planning board, and that the planning board is nominating that person from their board.
That's right. I mean, I would hope...
So that should be...
Basically selected, you know, by their own board, you know, to, you know, to the committee. It's not just a matter of, I'm on the planning board and I'm going to apply, and maybe the board, a select board will appoint me, but designated from within.
Right, right. So my...
I don't know if that's clear, if that's your...
So I think that should be in the motion, though.
So, well, that's what I'm saying is that with somebody being picked from the planning board and we have another person that's applied, or say we have two people from the planning board that have applied. All right, well, they, I would hope they would pick one of those two people that have already applied to be in their slot. But would that preclude us from appointing the other person that's on the planning board, but they also applied with us? I just want to...
I wouldn't think so. If that's an at-large appointment that's at the will of the Select Board.
I just want to make sure that that's, so people understand that there could be two or three people that applied, and one of them may be from the FinCom or the school or whatever. It could be two or three.
Yeah, and I think we need to include something in the motion, some kind of a deadline for them to make that appointment as well. Because we don't want to be sitting here next week and find out that they haven't made that appointment yet.
So by our next, by our next meeting?
Well, I think, our next meeting is what?
June 1st.
June 1st, so perhaps...
My concern, Mr. Chair, is that they, some of these boards may not have a meeting scheduled between now and then.
They may not, but they could, it gives them two weeks to post a meeting. I mean, it only needs to be a ten or fifteen-minute meeting with one item on the agenda.
Okay, yeah.
And they can do it by Zoom, and like I said, it's, like I said, a very short...
Because we have a timeframe. We have to work on that well. And we can't, we can't afford to wait another month to make this appointment. So I think...
I have an amended motion for Bob. So the amendment would be the makeup of the committee, and then, well, that would stay the same. The amendment would be the aforementioned committees or boards are to designate their appointment and a meeting to be held prior to the next Select Board meeting. And if the committees fail to appoint a member, the Select Board will appoint a member in their place.
I'll make that motion. Thank you again, Elaine.
Planning Board. Planning Board.
Okay. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. So the next item that I believe we need to consider is we have sixteen applicants for the at-large positions. Do we want to interview these folks, or do we just want to review the applications? Again, there's sixteen people, so that's a long time if we interview them. Ms. Bogart?
Go ahead.
I would say that we want to meet as many of them as possible. So if we're going to discuss the appointments, I would invite all of the applicants to our next meeting so we could meet them and discuss the application, not hold it against anyone who couldn't come, but invite them a chance to formally appear before us.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I think if we're going to do that, that we ought to be able to ask some questions. I mean, if we have a question, maybe, maybe not everyone will have a question, but, you know, Bob will have a question. Bob will have a question of this person and I'll have a question of another person.
And in your packet, Ms. Weston sent out a list of interview questions that other towns had used. Excellent questions. But here's the here's my thought on this. If we want to interview these people, I don't think we can wait till the next meeting. Because first of all, all 16 could show up, and that's going to make, that's a long time. The other thing is, hopefully at the next meeting, we're going to make appointments. And I think the board would like some time to reflect on what they've heard. So if the board would like to interview folks, what I would suggest is that we schedule an additional meeting for next Tuesday and have nothing else on the agenda but the interviews for the at-large applicants. And that would give the board a week to reflect on what they've heard and think about who they want to appoint.
And invite them, but make it clear that if you can't come to the meeting next Tuesday, that does not disqualify you.
Absolutely.
It's just an extra opportunity to appear before the board.
Absolutely.
Some people speak better than they write, some people write better than they speak. And just another chance. Because this is a big deal.
It certainly is. Any other thoughts on that?
I have a question. So 16, 15, 16 people applied. And let's say there's a member of the FinCom, a member of the school committee, and a member of the planning board that are already, that have applied. Should they, those committees have their meeting first? Because they might ultimately choose that person. Because let's say we were the FinCom and I said, hey, guys, I applied already. So there's someone interested. So that'll take that number down that we have to actually interview.
That would certainly be helpful.
So, but that means they'd have to have their meeting within a week.
And we don't know whether they'd be able to do that. But again, we do have pretty detailed applications. So, you know, we could work off the application, or we could interview. And we don't know, are all 16 folks going to come? Well, we don't know that. But we have to give them the opportunity. So what is the will of the board? Would we like to interview all the applicants or not? Any other discussion on this?
I know it's going to take a while, but I would like to interview them because it is a very important decision. And we may know some of them, but we may not know most of them. I mean, we have no clue, so.
Whenever we're appointing someone to any other committee, we always invite them to speak in front of us. When we have an appointment, we have the application. But we always ask, is the person here? So I don't see why this would be any different.
I agree. Any other thoughts?
Um, just, I see it both ways. But I really would like to see them here and to talk with them there. I know it'll be a long meeting and
Well, again, this would be the only item on the agenda.
Right.
And I agree. I think this is such an important position and such an important duty. I would like to have a chance to meet and talk to these folks as well. So I think when we send out invitations to the meeting, we need to have some parameters. Would everyone be okay with five minutes per applicant? They probably won't all take five minutes, but
Right.
Okay, and are there any conflicts with next Tuesday? Would that work for the board?
I have to find coverage for me at work. I'll do my best to. Because I also have a Wednesday meeting with the district, too, so trying to get two days off in a row is going to be difficult. But I'll do my best.
Is there another evening next week that would work better for you?
I'm not sure. I have to look at my schedule again. So let me, let me find out. I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Well, are there any evenings next week that don't work for other members of the board?
I can't picture my calendar right now, so I can make whatever work.
Okay.
We're not going away on vacation.
Let's tentatively schedule this for next Tuesday. Mr. Belvin, if you could get back to me tomorrow morning, then I can let Ms. Weston know and she can send out invitations.
You know what? I think Tuesday will be fine because I work the weekend after. I usually have the Tuesday before and the Tuesday after.
All right, so let's
I think the 25th is okay for me.
All right, so let's schedule an additional select board meeting for Tuesday, May 25th, at, would 6:00 PM work for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah. At 6:00 PM to interview the applicants. That'll be the only item on the agenda. And Ms. Weston, if you could send something out to them, let them know they'll have up to five minutes to speak before the select board. And and you know what? We'll we'll draw the names out of a hat or something to see who goes first. If people have a specific time, if they want earlier or later, let us know, but
So
Mr. Hoffman?
So we're going to interview everybody, but we won't make a decision until after
The next week, at our next regularly scheduled meeting on June 1st.
And by then, those committees will have already given us their designee.
Yes, and Mr. LaFond, if you could, when you communicate to those three committees, FinCom, School, and Planning, that we're, they have a chance to designate somebody for the committee, if you could ask them if they could schedule their meeting prior to next Tuesday, so we know they're designee. That way, if there's a at-large person who gets designated, well, they don't need to bother to come and come in that night. Unless, of course, they want to.
And actually, even if they don't, we're not going to be appointed. They would have been interviewed with us, but we're not going to appoint them till the following week.
Till June 1st.
Right. I think that gives everyone a chance to think about what they heard and reflect on the qualifications and the strengths and weaknesses of all the applicants. And take some time. I think it's so important that that's
I was just referring to the FinCom School Committee and Planning Board.
Right.
If they don't have a meeting before Tuesday to let us know or, you know, to
Right.
take someone off the at-large list, it doesn't really make a difference. We'll still talk with them on Tuesday.
Absolutely.
But when it comes time for the decision, they might be out of the running because they've already been chosen by their board.
That's right.
So instead of 15, we could be down to 12 or whatever.
Okay, so we will schedule an additional select board meeting next Tuesday, May 25th, at 6:00 PM. All right. And the last item on this agenda item is the charge of the committee. Thoughts? Yes?
Copy and paste the Fairhaven website. The Fairhaven website. You got to go on theirs. It was fantastic. So if we don't have to vote on a definite one tonight, I would highly suggest everybody look at that because that's a great inspirational point.
Ms. Bogart, would it be possible for you to email that to Mr. LaFond and he could distribute it to the rest of the board?
Absolutely.
Well, she can still send it all to us as long as there's no deliberation.
No deliberation, that's fine.
Because it's part of our research.
I'll send it to him.
Yes, Mr. Belvin?
I do have a question. Now, in in what we got from Elaine, it said Carver Town Administrator Screening Committee, Appointment and Charge. That's in our agenda packet here. Is it says it was adopted on September 10, 2013, by the Board of Selectment. Is that something that's, because it was adopted, we have to follow that? That was in there before?
No, that was just, that was just the charge of the last screening committee.
Right, I just want to make sure that. I just didn't want somebody to come back and say, well, you already have this in here and you have to follow what's in here.
I don't believe so. Do you have any thoughts on that, Mr. LaFond?
No, I think that was a time and place. There's nothing in the bylaws that would require that. The only thing I would point out, though, in this particular case, unlike Fairhaven, is that this job is very detailed in terms of its qualifications. The duties of the job, that's not always the case in some communities. So in terms of a charge, I think that has to be a part of the charge. You know, this, we're looking for someone who can do this. And it can't be some nebulous, you know, kind of, there's some definition to it already simply because there's a detailed position description.
I think that's very important.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, so what are you suggesting, Mr. LaFond?
I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just, well, I guess maybe I am. I'm suggesting that you want to be careful that the charge reflects the bylaw.
Okay.
And doesn't stray from the current bylaw. And I haven't seen Fairhaven's, but I think, you know, those types of examples could, you know, blend those with the town.
And I would think we'd include a reference to the bylaw, the current bylaw, in the charge.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
Yes. I was going to bring up that same thing without you getting in the middle, but but really, I mean, we have a bylaw that clearly states what the job's role is for the town administrator. It's pretty clear. All of those things that are in there. And that's one of the main things that the screening committee will have to look at and make sure that the person that they do pick up and decide to bring toward us can fill all those qualifications.
So if I could just ask the board to do their research and try to come to that June 1st meeting with some ideas and thoughts on the charge, so we can because I want to make sure by, I really would like to, by the end of that June 1st meeting, to be ready to move forward, to have our members chosen, to have the charge. We've done a lot of the other work tonight, and we're ready to let them do their work. That okay? Everyone at work for everybody?
Sounds good.
Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, so now it comes to, when do we get the 16 applicants' names? Do we wait till
We'll be on the next
Put them out?
I think
Because we're going to need it for the next agenda.
I would ask Ms. Weston, if you could, to email them out to the board tomorrow morning.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, and I just go from there.
I'm sorry.
Anyone? Yes, Mr. Belvin?
I just, it's only my opinion. Anybody that has applied for this, I think they should not go to all the board members and say, I really want this and whatnot. Like I said, I had two people just tell me, yeah, I'm interested. I filled out my application. Doesn't mean I'm going to vote for them or not, but I would, hopefully, they would give the board the opportunity to look over the applications, come in and do the interviews, and then have a clear head about what they're looking for and what they're going to vote for. This is really important, picking a new town administrator, and we want to make sure it's as clean as possible. Just my opinion. Thank you.
And I just want to take a minute to thank the board for spending all this time on it tonight. I know there was a lot here in this agenda on this, but I really thought it was important that we get as much decided as possible so that we can move along and get this process started. So I appreciate all your indulgence with this agenda item. Is there anything else on this? All right. Moving forward, discussion and possible vote to support the Community One Stop for Growth Grant application. Ms. Yuen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wrote up a little summary that I think is included in your packet. So I'm just going to read this and then say a few words about it in addition. In collaboration with Dave Seidenthal, Director of Operations and Maintenance, John Woods, Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance, Kevin Forg, Health Agent, and I inadvertently left out, and Kevin Tracy, Chair of the North Carver Water District, Mr. LaFond and I are working to secure a Community One Stop for Growth Grant. The grant is three parts. The first would be to offset the cost of the Plymouth Street waterline extension project. The second part is to provide shareos, which are, as Mrs. Bogart knows well, are not designated bike lanes, but rather line painting on the roads alerting both vehicles and bicycles that they both need to share the road. These would extend from the Pine City Road intersection of Plymouth Street down to the intersection of Plymouth Street and Route 58, and with appropriate new signage. The third part would be to install a new sidewalk on the western side of Route 58 from Plymouth Street south to Purchase Street. So that would extend the sidewalk that we just got in 2016, 2017, that runs all the way down to South Meadow Road to Purchase Street. That would extend it up to Plymouth Street intersection. If successful, this grant would not only offset the cost of the waterline extension, but would also free up some Chapter 90 road repair money as well as being integral to our Complete Streets program. I forgot to add in here that the application is due June 3rd. So we really need a vote on this. Hopefully, everyone is on board with this. This is a very, this is a 39-page application. Couple of sections don't apply to us because we're doing an infrastructure, basically an infrastructure project. But it does require a letter of support from several boards, including the select board. And I believe I gave everyone the link. So hopefully, people have had a chance to look at it.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? Mr. Belvin?
So it says to put share the road from Pine City Road to the intersection of Plymouth Street and Route 58.
Mm-hmm, so going west from Pine City, yeah.
Okay.
So the reason for that, Mr. Belvin, is because both Dave and John went out and looked at these roads, and they're just too narrow for sidewalks or for bike lanes, or for designated bike lanes. You would, unfortunately, you would end up taking too much of people's properties. And so, shareos is a compromise, I guess. Because the cars and bikes will have to share. But it is something that these particular grants, the people who look at these grants do appreciate because it is trying to make our town more friendly to bicycles and pedestrians and things like that. So is that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, and I just, the other thing about the sidewalks on the western side of 58 from Plymouth Street, all the way down to Purchase Street, won't we have to take land from people to put those sidewalks? Because if you look at the western side, when you leave Cumberland Farms, you have the wetlands that are there. But then on the other side, they had built that house, and they don't have a whole lot of space on the backside. And then it goes all the way around.
Well, any
We'll have to shift the roadway.
Yeah. No, I don't think, I mean, any time, what we did from South Meadow Road to Purchase Street was similar. I mean, the town owns a certain amount of property inside what most of us think of as our property. It's actually, the layout actually includes, I don't forget, it was four or six feet. So you technically are taking it, but it really belongs to you. They get public notice. I know Elaine worked really hard during that project. And I think most people were okay with it. I think there were a couple of people who finally decided it was something they wanted to see. But for the most part, people wanted that. That's just a standard thing that happens with sidewalks. And again, this is, just because we're applying for this grant doesn't mean we're going to get it. These are really competitive.
I understand that. I just, like I said, I'm just looking at the Route 58 on the people that live on that street that, and I understand the town owns up to six feet or whatever. All right. But some shifting of the road and whatnot is going to have to take place because there's a hill when you go past one, yeah.
I'm not qualified to answer that question, Bob.
All right, now just
This is something that the Operations and Maintenance people, DPW, really wanted to do. They're still waiting to be put on the tip, Transportation Infrastructure Program that the state runs. But, you know, there's a line, and we're kind of at the back of the line right now. So we were thinking, hey, why not propose this as well? I mean, we are part of the Complete Streets program, and, you know, sidewalks are a good thing. So we'll let the engineer figure that one out, I guess, is my answer.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to support the grant, the Community One Stop for Growth Grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Ms. Bogart?
Um, I wanna thank Sarah and everyone that you've worked with for this, because this seems pretty amazing.
It'll be even better if we get it.
Like you said, when shareos are involved, they, you know, steal my heart a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, two questions. Why the shareos there on that part? And then, would the grant cover the whole cost of the shareos and the sidewalk?
I can't answer what the grant will cover. I can't tell you we will get the grant. It would cover, if, if, I, I imagine that hopefully it will cover all of this. I mean, that's the whole idea.
Yeah.
Um, maybe I didn't understand your question?
No, I just didn't, yeah, this, no, that's fine, I, 'cause I didn't, how, would the grant cover those costs? And then, why was that section of road chosen for the shareos?
Um, I, I said a little bit earlier, but perhaps, um, I didn't say it very well. So that section of the, um, North Carver Village District, the streets are very narrow, and we would end up taking big chunk, talk about taking land, that would be half people's front yards, for the most part, if, if you put in a designated bike lane.
No, I totally get that, but that's kind of the case all over town, and I don't know that that section was part of the, the bike path that was worked on with Serp Ed. I am all for shareos, I'm just wondering, like, I understand why it would work there, but why was that section of road chosen over another section?
Because this is where we're putting the Plymouth Street waterline.
That's what I was thinking, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And please thank everyone that you've worked with.
Thanks.
This is really great.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Belvin? Um, how much is this grant? Do we have a?
We don't know yet, we're still working on all that, the, the cost of that. We're, we're in touch with engineers and the health agent, and we're looking at the bid documents, and we're gonna pull it all together, right?
Yes, we are, that's right.
Thank you.
Pull together quickly.
Yeah, believe me, it's a good team, it's just, there's a lot of stuff, it's a thirty-nine-page application.
Any further discussion? Ms. Ewens, I'd like to thank you and everyone involved.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for all your hard work.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
So, uh, no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next agenda item is, uh, Mr. Belvin, your article, your item, item? Sorry, on the role, responsibility, and creation of a policy for the Chair and Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just?
Mr. Hoplin?
Before we, I noticed we have a couple of applicants here, could we maybe take that out of order so they won't have to sit through?
I would second, is there, is there a mo- that a motion?
There's a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Absolutely.
Sorry, didn't say it soon enough.
So that's fine, let's go down to, uh, the request for entertainment license for Brewery 44.
Mike Johnson, I'm the owner.
Excuse me, can you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Mike Johnson, I'm the owner of Brewery 44, along with Jameson Wright, and we're here to request a entertainment license.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the entertainment license application.
And a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Absolutely, discussion.
Um, what type of entertainment and where will it take place? Will it take place in the parking lot, is it just inside? Um, 'cause I didn't see some of your advertising that you were gonna have, um, uh, some trucks out there and whatnot, so.
Right, right.
If you could just expand on that?
Sure, um, we do have a beer garden that, uh, that's coming in with, uh, food trucks, uh, which is gonna be on the side of the building. Um, the request would be for, uh, acoustic, um, outside, um, and then inside, we would have acoustic as well as comedians, um, uh, video, um, like DJ, uh, events as well, where you have a video in the background with the, pretty popular with like eighties nights and something like that. Um, and then, uh, an occasional, um, you know, two or three-piece band inside the, uh, the brewery. Uh, but everything would be inside except for the, well, uh, anything louder than normal, anything louder than acoustic would be inside. Acoustic would only be outside.
Okay. Um, with that being said, have you submitted any plans, uh, that would designate where everything would be located on the property? Um, to see, 'cause of, there's travel, uh, traffic patterns in that area there, so we wanna just make sure that areas like that, that are going on, that it's roped off, or have some type of, uh, safety feature in there?
Right, no, we, um, actually tomorrow, we're doing our safety test, but, uh, we, uh, we have, uh, worked with, um, with the, uh, the Fire Chief on what is required for the outside beer garden, uh, and I can tell you that, um, we're, right now, we have, uh, two, well, actually, we have six large, uh, cement barriers coming in that will rope off the entire section. The area outside is, what's this?
Twenty-five by sixty-five.
Twenty-five by sixty-five on the side? Right, yeah.
Okay.
So it'll be completely blocked off to traffic, um, so that's, you know, like I said, we're just, uh, going with the, uh, instructions that we received from the, uh, from the Chief of Police, I'm sorry, uh, Fire Chief.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. It's good to see something going on. Are you doing karaoke at all?
You know, we've had a couple requests for that, so I can save you a spot.
Any further discussion?
You don't wanna hear me, but you.
I just had a quick question, as far as the outdoor entertainment, what are the hours, what would the hours be for that?
It's gonna be in the weekends, um, our outdoor, uh, uh, section is only gonna be open on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Um, and as far as the hours go, uh, it won't be anything past eight o'clock at night.
Okay, 'cause I know there's neighbors in the back that it was ghost till ten, eleven o'clock at night, I didn't wanna have anybody.
Yeah, no, there won't, uh, there won't be anything outside. Yeah, there won't be anything outside past eight o'clock, 'cause it's all gonna be acoustic outside.
And you're only having acoustic outside?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, Ms. Bogart?
Would you consider amending your motion to approve contingent on written approval from the Fire Department?
And perhaps add that all fees, all applicable fees are paid as well?
Sure, we can add that in as a motion.
Act taxes and fees.
So we have an amended motion, is there an amended second?
An amended second.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Good luck.
All right. So we are back to the discussion on.
Jim, thank you for doing that. I didn't know why that, that they were here for that, so thank you.
Nor, nor did I, so thank you for bringing that up.
I was wondering what they were here for, but.
I don't know, that finally clicked, I'm like, that's.
So, we're back to the discussion on the role, responsibility, and creation of a policy for the Chair and Vice Chair. Mr. Belvin?
All right, so I brought this forward, um, to know what the Chair does, i- it's, really, there's nothing written anywhere that says this is what the role or responsibility of the Chair is or the Vice Chair. It's one of these things that you get in the position, all right, here you go, all right? Um, I think we need something written down, written down, um, that actually has what the Chair is responsible to be doing, okay? Um, and it's just a guideline, it's, it's not all-encompassing, says this is it, what's ever on this paper, that's all you gotta do. But it's just the fact that there's some base things that the Chair has responsibilities for, and that that be written down somewhere that says, hey, this is how it is. I like policies and procedures and guidelines that help us to do that. Um, like I said, ever since I started this position, I've been keeping a, a folder of things that if I'm not here, and someone takes over for me, that I can hand it off to them and say, here you go. This is what I've been doing, this is the notes that I have, information that you may want, all right, you may not want 'em, but there should be something that we can go to and say, okay, here we go. On this month, we have to do this, and I understand we have a town administrator, assistant town administrator, but you should have a guideline of where you're doing for the whole year, that this has to be this, and this, and this, and there's guidelines that say, this is how you do this, um, and something written down. That's why I brought it for, the role and responsibilities, to say, okay, here you go. You're the Chair, you can do whatever you want, all right? But my feeling is, is I'm looking forward to the future of how other people will be able to see the position, all right, and grow from the information that a Chair has, or a Vice Chair has, or a selectman has, to somebody who's never been a selectman before, that there's something that they can go on and say, oh, okay, I've watched meetings, okay, I came here and there, all right, fine, but there's some other things in there that you do that I may not know. And heaven forbid if one of the other people here is gone, and, or you're gone, and we don't know what that other person, we'd have to get into that position. There should be something tangible that we have for it, and that's why I put that on, and it wasn't about any personality issue with anybody in that role as a Chairperson, it wasn't, it was as a guideline, and, I mean, this isn't from, I took it from somebody else who told me about it, and I turned around and, and kinda went with it, but, um, it was just the fact that I think it's a good idea.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
All right, I'll go.
Ms. Bogart?
All right, so I took an MMA webinar on public discourse, and I forget the presenter's name, but they stressed the importance of a really strong Chair, and how a strong Chair can really make a board that much more successful and meetings run that much more efficiently, and, uh, they cited examples of policies that other towns have for their Chairs and Vice Chairs. And if you look into, to Select Board handbooks that other towns have, which I think is a great idea that you did bring up, um, but that's for another time. A lot of towns actually have a, a policy for the, the roles of the Chair, of the Select Board, uh, Chair and Vice Chair, and I just happen to have Arlington open right now, but, um, but it's, it's not uncommon. So I think it would be a good idea, and, um, I mean, of course, I could bring something before the Board, but I also would love you to create something to bring to us, too. You know, I can send my links and stuff, but it's reasonable, and it's, it's not uncommon. And the more I looked into these handbooks, the more I saw the code of conduct and that stuff, and, and it was kinda changing my minds on, on things that I've, opinions I've had in the past. It was really eye-opening to see what is common practice for the Select Board. So I think this would be good to at least review in physical form, not just an idea, but actually get a document before us, and then see what we think, but this document creation's on you.
Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Ewens?
Yes, I think maybe you should have input from the current Chair and, and former Chair. I mean, you know, we've been there. Um, and it, and I'm sorry if I missed anything you said earlier, but, you know, again, we each, there may be things that are standard, um, different meetings we may have, say with the town administrator or some such. Um, but we also have things that we are kind of stylistic things, I would imagine. Um, that's, and none of that's really set in stone.
Yep, I, Mr. Hoplin?
I, I think the, um, the key word you said was guideline. Because the last thing I wanted was something written, rules and regulations, and then if, for, as we know, you have to, you have to be flexible, and something happened, all of a sudden, Chairperson, or if you're the Chair next year, you get called out on that, it's not fair to the Chairperson. Guidelines, I love, I love that idea.
That's a good point, yeah, and it is the Chair's meeting.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I just, I just thought that, you know, role, responsibility, and creation of a policy, that, that had me a little nervous, but guideline is a much better, you need some flexibility. I think that's a great idea.
That was just semantics, if I said policy, that's just.
Well, that's an important semantic distinction, yeah.
Yep, no, that, that, when I, when I read policy on the agenda, I was like, okay.
Yeah.
And if I could just
I agree.
Speak as, as someone who's, who's Chair, who's been Vice Chair, I think every, every person that holds those roles are gonna, as, as Ms. Ewen said, it's, it's a stylistic thing, everyone's gonna do things a little bit different, differently, but I, I think maybe this would be something that we could forward, and that when we talked earlier about the goals and procedures, maybe this would be something that could fit in there, maybe you could put something together and submit it, and we could talk about it at that time, and discuss it as a Board, and, and see where those guidelines go, that, that work?
No, that works fine, I mean, I will put something together and, and bring it to the Board and.
All right.
All right, and I'll talk to some of the former Chairs and Vice Chairs that we've had in the past, and, and talk to them.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, okay. Let's see with that, so that brings us to the Town Administrator Update. Mr. LaFon?
Yes, a few things, first of all, the, uh, Ongoing CARES Act update, um, I do have, have given you a handout. Um, similar to the last meeting, in terms of, uh, documenting where we are at the moment, we've had nine submissions to date totaling one-point-three million of our one-point-seven-million-dollar cap. Um, they were, which leaves us with about four-hundred-thousand dollars remaining capacity, assuming all of our requests get funded. One of the, uh, items that was raised at a last meeting with, with, uh, Mr. Tom O'Brien, and the Commissioners were there, was, uh, the status of our eleven-three submission for two-hundred-eighty-nine-thousand dollars. Um, I did speak to Ms. Tom O'Brien earlier, um, at the end of last week, and he assured me that that was under review. That's obviously, um, one of the larger ones on here. One of the concerns that we have is I have, uh, between the school and O and M, it's possible we have about, um, close to half a million dollars of more requests that may be, um, uh, appropriate. So, you know, have to be real careful again as we go down the stretch, um, to try to reserve a little bit of capacity. Um, try to, um, we have to assume that not everything here in its full amount is gonna get approved, there's, you know, usually some items, uh, within, within a particular request, um, even if they're small, that, that might not be approved. Um, so it's that balance between trying to reserve some capacity, and wanna make sure that we have, uh, proposals that we know or fairly certain will be, will be approved. Um, I have attached to this the cover sheets of all of our nine submissions to date. Um, once again, if you, um, if you don't have enough, uh, if you can't get to sleep at night, uh, if melatonin isn't helping, this is, this, this is, this will help a lot. Uh, but it's just an example of, really down to the, the, the dirty details as to what, what has been submitted to date. One of the projects, uh, particular projects that we're hoping, uh, that we can get some, uh, um, some help with is replacing the, some, you know, the air handles in this billing, building, um, obviously, um, because of the air quality. Um, not that the air quality's bad, but as, you know, some of you are aware that we have, we did purchase and have operating some, some standalone right over here, for instance, air purifiers, uh, for offices, uh, conference rooms, offices. Um, the goal ultimately is, is if we can do something to up, update this building a bit, uh, to take that, uh, to make that permanent, we can certainly reappropriate these, these, uh.
Sorry, could you repeat that, Ms. LaFon?
That's right.
But which part?
The, the whole part, when the motorcycle was going by.
My motorcycle limitation, that. No, uh, we, as you have seen, we have, I think we purchased about fifteen, um, or maybe even more, I forget, it's been a little while now, of these, uh, standalone air purifiers that are distributed around the building, conference rooms, um, police, schools, and there are, um, multiple bodies have, uh, these are being used, library. But to the extent that we can maybe have a, a, a permanent improvement to this building, uh, keeping in mind that, number one, the criteria for the program, number one, it has to be an item that hasn't been budgeted. It has to be, um, something that is specific to, um, you know, mitigating of, uh, COVID. Now, keep in mind, it doesn't have to be exclusively for that purpose, but that has to be the predominant, uh, uh, value, and it has to be something that you would not have otherwise done if it not been for the, for the pandemic, so. So this, you know, hopefully, dealing with the, uh, overall air quality in this building, uh, should fit that bill. So Dave Sedentoff has, uh, has an informal quote, he's gonna be getting some more. That's the type of project that if it's, if it's within a range of a, you know, uh, he thinks it may be in the two-hundred-thousand-dollar range, that, that may be the type of project that we take a risk with, because as you know, um, the, it's a reimbursement program, so we're very, very careful about what we submit, so that we don't end up with fifty, sixty thousand dollars of expenditures that we don't, we don't have any way to pay for. Um, it's possible that, um, once we have a better idea of what the, uh, the so-called ARRA money, the, uh, um, the appropriation by the federal government to, to supplement the, uh, the CARES Act funds as they exist right now. Um, we don't know exactly how those funds will be spent, but I, I guess my thought process is, to the extent that we may have some, create some deficit spending, um, if we don't get reimbursed, uh, that may be a place that we can help fill, fill that gap without having to go to our stabilization fund, so. So that's really where we stand right now, we, um, some of the, um, projects that, um, we were very happy that we had our response vehicle, EMS response vehicle that was, uh, funded, and we do have a couple Fire Department, um, projects or items that are in the two-hundred-eighty-nine thousand that are being reviewed right now. Um, and we hope to get some funding for the re, uh, repair of the roofs over at the, in the restroom over at Sherwood Park. Again, those, I think, are very, uh, very well fit the bill in terms of what should be approved under this act. So, yes.
Um, so first of all, thank you for this, because I know this is something I asked for, and obviously, it's a lot of work, so I really appreciate you taking the time to put this, um, this whole digest of, of the CARES Act together. Uh, and I, if I could just ask you a couple of questions? When we get a check from the, from Plymouth County, for instance, at the last meeting, we got that large hundred-and-eighty, I forget exactly how much it was, but hundred-and-eighty-five thousand roughly, do we get a breakdown from them when we get the check of what that check is for?
We have to ask for it.
So they don't automatically provide that?
No, we have to ask for that, and, and, you know, given some time, they, they are forthcoming, um, in doing so, um, so, yes, for instance. So yes, for instance, and I can't quote exactly right now what it was, but the first submission of $212,000, well, $165,000 is a significant gap. We do have a breakdown of what those, those differences are, as I said, don't have it on me, so I can't speak to it, but, but again, we had to ask for that. Again, very forthcoming, it's just not standard practice to provide that.
So, so when, when we put in for a submission and they decline it, do we know it's been declined?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so they let you know right away when they decline something?
Well, not right away, but, uh, you know, during the review process, which can be exhaustive though. So it's not, if we submit something this week, it doesn't mean next week they're gonna say, uh, this, this, this isn't appropriate. It will take time. But, but keep, keep in mind though that we, we do, we vet it pretty well here, Meg and I, in terms of, you know, applying these criteria. And we also spend time speaking to Mr. O'Brien, who, in fairness to him, has to be very careful about what he says because ultimately they're being, they will be audited by the federal government. And he's been clear, I think he's mentioned to every board member that what may be an applicable project or reimbursement for one community may not be for another community. So trying to get some sort of preapproval is, is difficult and Tom's very careful with that himself. But we do, we do, we are very careful here vetting these, talking to department heads and trying to determine how it fits, if there's, you know, what the risk may be if something's not funded. So by the time, you know, we're actually submitting something, we've, we've got a pretty good idea, there isn't going to be an application that's just outright denied. We have, we have, uh, we don't have any fear of that.
I, I, I just was curious, not on the town's end, but on, on their end, when they give us a check, you know, how much detail came along with that check?
They will, they will provide us a breakdown. Again, it's not standard practice, but I know that we and other towns, you know, it's, uh, we, we all want that, obviously, so.
Could, could we, could we going forward just, just ask for that? And when we receive it, just distribute it to the board so we, we know what?
Very happy.
What the checks are for? Thank you, I really appreciate it.
One other piece here too is it had been suggested, and I thought it had some credence to, we have a number of buildings and officials that who predominantly submit and would, you know, these types of projects that, that, um, so I have asked, it was suggested to form a small working group, um, consisting of about five people, um, schools, COA, library, public safety, O and M, for us to just meet, even if it's for 15 minutes a week, just to, you know, review where we are. You know, try to make sure everybody's on the same page. I think it's important for, for some people to know, okay, we've got a 400, you know, depending on what may be denied, $500,000 capacity. We don't want to fight over this capacity, okay? Well, what, what do you think the best approach to this is? So I, I know it's, it's not something that other towns are, are doing at the moment, but I think, um, as we kind of get down the stretch, it may be a particular help. So, um, had that discussion at a department meeting, this department head meeting this morning and, um, there was the, yeah, that's a good idea, but you know, a little bit of the groan, yeah, it's a good idea, but we're all so busy. But, but I think it's recognized that this is, uh, this, this is helpful as this winds, winds down here.
Especially where there's gonna be a little turnover in the town treasurer's department and.
Right.
You know, you may have more funds coming, coming under the whole opera program, so, you know, we'll.
And I'm trying to think if there was anything else on that subject, and I think that, that is it.
Mr. Jim? Mr. Belvin?
Um, I, I, at first I thought the same way you did about, I don't think I really personally need to know what's been denied by them, but I think our town does because if you see that they deny this, this, and this, you have a good idea of, all right, they're, they're not gonna do this. Don't even bother submitting this in.
Right, don't, don't resubmit.
Right, well, that's what I'm, I'm saying here. So I think that's what you guys have been doing already. Is to really dwindle down the, okay, they're not gonna do this, they're not gonna do that. I, I have the same concerns with you that we, we resubmit the same stuff over and that's already been denied.
We, we, we don't do that, but we do ask for the backup. They're very forthcoming and certainly be happy to, happy to distribute that.
So, thank you.
Moving on, Plymouth Street Waterline, there's, there's no update other than the fact that we are just waiting for the contractor to execute the contract agreement. And I know they have had some conversations with Elaine just in terms of, um, you know, getting, getting, getting moving on this project, so, but again, they gotta execute the contract first, so we're still, still waiting. Again, we have no reason to believe they won't. But as was pointed out to us, uh, and when we were speaking to town council in terms of getting this, this contract in, uh, you know, in order, that contractors are real busy right now, so. So for better or for worse, they're very busy right now, so, so we're, so we're not, we're not nervous, but okay, let's, we hope that this week we'll have the contract executed.
Okay, Ms. Yuen?
Um, so, Mr. LaFond, what happens if they don't execute the contract? We go to the second lowest bidder?
We, we should be able to do that, yes. We could obviously go out and do another procurement. It has been, uh, Mr. Fogg, Kevin Fogg has told, I'm sorry, not Kevin Fogg. Yeah, I believe it was Kevin, is it him or Dave Sedentoff? They have told me that they believe that the construction timeline, the three months, is very, very generous for this type of project. So certainly we'd have to interact with DEP to let them know that, that we've, um, you know, have a contracting issue and may have to, you know, reprocure. But that's something that could be done fairly swiftly. But again, that's thinking, you know, that's one of those thinking a little bit, um, worst case at the moment, and I know we've already discussed it, you know, if necessary, Elaine's ready to, you know, bounce right on that from a procurement standpoint. But the, but ideally, we would, we would just default to the, the second lowest bidder.
Thank you.
Mr. Belvin?
Uh, is there anything that this board has to do in case something like that happens? That, do we have to vote on who the, the next contractor that comes up with the board or whatnot? I mean, to be totally honest, I says, I want this to get running.
Oh, yeah.
We all do, but.
The answer is yes, yes and no. The, um, the chief procurement officer awards the bids. We would go to the second lowest bidder, but it's, this board has to ultimately contract with the bidder. So it's kind of a joint, um, operation here. So, um, so if there's a default by the current company, if they have an issue with the contract, don't want to sign a contract, then we default to the, you know, as an example, we def, you know, I would award the bid to the next highest bidder. But that still has to be, and they'd have to execute the contract that's provided, but that contract is executed by, by this board. So, uh, there really isn't any way to expedite it at the moment. But if this, if there's something that would seem helpful, I'll certainly, certainly let the board know.
I mean, if I, in my opinion is that if it takes a, if they don't, this board to say, if they don't sign it within two weeks or three weeks, that we move on, um, then.
Well, I, I would, uh, no offense, I wouldn't even wait that long. As soon as town, if, if we get nervous, town council says, okay, there's a reasonable threshold here, they haven't executed the contract, move on, then we're gonna move on right away.
And our deadline's May 31st, right? To get started.
Right.
Started right now. Again, what does getting started mean? I mean, we talk about shovel in the ground, but realistically, there's a lot of, you know, work getting a dig safe down there. So there's things that, that are more administrative in nature that certainly are important and would constitute the beginning of this project, so. But I, you know, I, I didn't bring this up, you know, to have people fear that, um, what happens if they don't execute a contract? They have no reason to think they won't, so I, but.
I, I only mentioned that.
But I can't help but think of that because that's what, that's what we do here.
That's right.
We think of this worst case scenario, so you don't have to, hopefully.
Right, but I, I brought it up simply because I'm sure other people are thinking that too. And I want them to know there's a plan. There is a plan.
There's a process, that's right.
And a process.
And Mr. LaFond, I think it's obviously the will of this board that that project move along and, and with all possible, uh, speed. So if you need something from us, if we need to call a special meeting or something to sign some documents, whatever, please let us know and we'll do all we can to help out.
Yes, okay, and it may very well be that, uh, that we, we, we discuss that, um, Mark, about maybe even if it's just execute a document, just to make sure everything's in order, at least in time for us to legitimately say this project's underway. But keep in mind, you know, we can do our part, um, we can't do the part for other people, but we're acting swiftly in good faith, and we will get it done, so.
Thank you.
Didn't expect that conversation, but it, but it's not a bad one. It's not a bad conversation because we, we, we make things work, but nothing's easy. We all know that, so. Next item, and I, and I think this, I'm not sure if, I know Bob may have mentioned something about this, the, the mask wearing policy in town hall. Now, I can't speak to meetings of the board, you run these meetings, but the policy has been and remains that if you're not at your personal workstation, you're supposed to be wearing a mask. We ask the public to wear a mask. One thing we don't know is if people have obviously medical type conditions that prevent them from doing that. And as you know, this privacy rights and we, we're not privy to that information. The one thing is, you know, we, we can't be walking around the halls all day making sure people have their masks on, but, um, as of even this morning, we've reinforced that to our department heads, that the current policy is the current policy. And even if it's just for the comfort of the public to, you know, I mean, I may be vaccinated, well, I am vaccinated, but if someone comes to the window in there, they don't know that I'm vaccinated. So just for the comfort of the public, even if, if it's the public health angle of it is waning, we certainly hope so, but it's a comfort level at the moment. And as you know, the guidance from the state is changing. And I think we can revisit this, you know, the end of the month. But my, I know, we, you know, survey our sister communities out there and they're kind of all over the place in terms of where they believe they're gonna be going with masks. But my attitude at the moment is that at least till the end of May, we're not gonna change anything and see if the guidance changes. I like, I'd rather be careful, rather be careful. So even if everybody's not happy with it, but our department heads are obviously very understanding. And for better or for worse, we've kind of gotten used to them. So as much as it's used to seem like more of a burden, it really, I think a lot of us forget we have them on these days. But this too will come to an end and maybe sooner rather than later. But at least through the end of the month, the policy remains in effect. Again, as for meetings of public bodies, you know, you know, how a chair decides, you know, to run his or her meeting, that's a different, that's a different issue and that's beyond my, beyond my scope.
Mr. Belvin?
This is my public health, even though you've been vaccinated, you can still get COVID. It's called the breakthrough infection and, um, there's a low possibility of that happening, but it has happened in, in this area where people have had the vaccine and lo and behold, they got COVID again. And they got it in a very mild case of it. It wasn't like they were gonna go on respirators or anything, but they still got it and they were still infected and they could infect other people. So you have to really understand that even though you can be around with other people that have had the vaccine, uh, but you still have to be aware that if they came in contact with somebody else who was exposed, there's that possibility that you could get it. So I just want people to just be aware of the facts that are out there. Just be careful, that's it. Be careful and look out for other people.
All right. The next item, and I, I had intended to be more prepared on this question of town walking path, so I apologize, so if you don't mind, I'll skip over that for tonight and get you further information. Townwide yard sale, this is something Jen had brought up and I had done some looking at it, but Jen has put some work into it. So would you mind if I defer, um, my notes if I could recognize the, um, the young lady from Carver?
Ms. Bogart?
I'm trying to be parliamentary here, Mr.. So maybe Jen could, uh, fill it in for me.
Well, it's all right there in front of you. Again, this is, this was my scaled down kind of introductory version, so I emailed it to Rick and the first side is my template for a form. Um, I put Saturday, June 26th down because I'm, you know, thinking positively, like if this becomes a thing, maybe it can be the weekend before the 4th of July. You know, 4th of July is the beginning of summer, everybody's thinking about other stuff. So weekend before the 4th of July, um, the hours of eight to two are pretty consistent with, um, townwide yard sales. I did look outside of Rutland for guidance too, so that's pretty consistent. I mean, it's fairly self-explanatory. Um, and basic, fill out the form, return it to the select board's office. Or email name, address and brief description of what you're selling. We'd have to decide who the emails are going to. Um, submissions would be due, if we went with the 26th, they'd be due Thursday, June 17th. Then the town will compile the addresses into the official participation list or participant list. And there were different ways, you know, sake of ease, you could just do it alphabetically by street. You could try to be fancy and do it geographically or, again, because I like to put a lot on myself. I found West Boylston actually puts out this really, really impressive, like, Google map where everybody who submits, they plot them on a Google map, give them a number and then have this corresponding sheet to it, um, which I think is really cool. And I'll just, so there's that part. Then on the back, it was just kind of like what, what I think the best steps for us to do next would be. You'll see number two is, is the biggie decide who'll be in charge of accepting submissions. I'm not trying to Bogart this, this project, never actually use that. Um, so I am not trying to steal it, but if no one wants to do it.
I think you should do it, Jen. That's just my feeling.
Well, no, I, well, and I don't know if it would fall within, within Rick's purview and the office too. I don't know how things like this are normally handled. But if it was like everyone was grumbling like, okay, it's a Jen's idea, why do I have to do it? I would do it, except I would ask a better, hmm. I would ask the best way to receive the emails because I do, I do wonder, I don't know how many people are gonna participate, but I do kind of wonder how fun it would be for me to be getting all of these emails to my direct one. I'm not saying I won't, I'm just open to ideas. There's so much laughter at me right now.
No, so I, if I may, Mr. Ch, I'm gonna say something serious. I think it's best to do it that way. This, the easiest way to do it would be to have them send it to you. I think the only thing our office should have to do is just post whatever you get. Whatever needs posting on the website, just, you've, you've done it all up, you send it to them. However, if you want to make it a map, alphabetical by street, whatever it is. And that way, their only chore is to, is to actually post it out there. And that way, it kind of centralizes it.
Yeah.
And then you know you, it's, it's getting done the way you want it done.
A lot of people are gonna learn my name by emailing me.
I, I agree. You know what I think? I think it may start off slow the first year, but if you do this on a repetitive basis by the third or fourth year, I think it'll be very popular.
And again, this is not about me, it's a community thing. It's not Jen's annual yard sale.
No, no, we.
Jen's idea, but.
We would be approving it. I mean, something like number six, put info in Carver reporter. So you have Kathy's email, you say, okay, here's my, here's my public service announcement.
Well, and see, yeah.
Ask the fire department to put something up on its sign. You, you know people over there, you're gonna get that put up on this, you know what I mean?
And that was the stuff that, again, I was, I was less unsure of. The compiling the list, yeah, I know I was probably gonna have to take that on. But it was the official outreach, the fire department, the reporter, Area 58. I've never done any of that, so there's.
So it's good practice.
Be a procedure for it. I wouldn't know who to reach out, how to, what the appropriate method of that is. So for that, I definitely look for guidance or for, you know.
So I, I mean, if I, if I may continue, Mr. Ch, so I mean, I, I really meant that. You have Kathy Gallerani's email, right? No.
I.
Okay, well, she's right there, so you can ask her after the meeting, right? You know how to talk to the chief and the, and the deputy chief and so on, and you can just walk over there and ask them. I just think it's a really, if there's multiple people doing this, it's gonna get really confusing and twisted up in knots. That's just my personal feeling. And I think you know how you want it done. And it's okay, you're a town official, you have the right to, you know. I mean, we've basically approved this, right? I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Well, again, we always, you know, there was part of that policy, everything goes through the town administrator instead of talking to town employees. So again, that's, I would never wanna.
Very much appreciate the protocol, I really do. And we'll certainly let departments know that they may be hearing from you, that sounds like a good.
I don't want to overstep anything, anyone, any.
Yeah, that would be, you're right, I apologize. That would be the right way to do it.
So again, these are my ideas. I think it's great to talk about it because again, these aren't steadfast rules. This is just what I've seen work, um, what I think would work. And then with my background, PR, marketing and, and event promotion, I came up with a little, uh, if we were to have a radio spot, this is what it would be. But I thought this is kind of more attention grabbing for if it was good, when it goes on the website. But I thought this is kind of more attention-grabbing for if it was, when it goes on the website or on the Facebook page. Instead of it being just a very benign two sentences, because this should be exciting, I thought of something, I think, a little more catchy. So again, all open for discussion, input, this is us, but this was what I came up with.
Mr. Belvin.
Yeah, real quick. Oh, thank you. So my thought for this promotional text is that you go up to Area 58, you call them, 1019, that's the phone number, or email them. And, or just show up. I mean, they're very open to all kinds of, this is a public service announcement. And you can get, ask them when you can get on there and they will tape you saying it.
Oh, man.
And if people don't get cable, Area 58 puts that up on YouTube, pretty much. I'm pretty sure they put pretty much everything up there. And you can ask them if they will. So pretty much everyone can get YouTube.
I don't want to do anything that the board is not comfortable with and that the staff is not comfortable with. Because we are a unit.
No, well, just, again, I agree. We'll, again, just stay in touch with us. I mean, you know, whatever it takes, we'll do what we can to help. But I appreciate you taking the legwork because it can be, I know, not on this board, but I know there's other boards and committees that they come up with ideas and they expect someone else to do it.
Yeah.
And that's different. So I appreciate your doing the legwork on this. But any way we can help, please don't, do not hesitate. And if we can, you know, interact, interface with other departments or agencies, don't hesitate, please.
Okay, so then I guess number one would be, well, I guess before, well, number one is approve the submission form. Saturday, June 26th, is there any conflict with that date?
Well, I guess the only thing I would suggest is to just discuss it with the public safety officials and make sure there's not something going on that perhaps we aren't aware of.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as they have no conflicts. Does anyone have a conflict?
Yeah, I think you're right.
Do you think you could do that and let me know?
I'd be happy to do that in the morning.
Okay. So then that would be submission. Then number two, we've decided, that was me. So then number three, have blank submission forms available. So I guess once a date is confirmed, then I would...
Email the form to...
Yeah, I would ask that maybe, so then, so for these steps, would you guys prefer me communicate with Rick and Elaine on getting them done, but then them relaying to you kind of where we are in the checklist? Kind of assuming this is the unofficial checklist, letting you know where we're at in the process?
Mr. Belvin.
Yeah, I don't think that, once we've went ahead and now given you the task to do this, I don't think you have to come back to us or keep us informed except for a regular meeting.
Okay.
All right, just an update like that, to say, hey, this is where I'm at with this. And we're not creating a committee about this. This is just one person, so there's no meaning line. But what I did actually write in is that, because some of this is a lot. When you start looking at, okay, fine, trying to get all these people that are bringing submissions to you and everything. I was wondering if you were interested in talking to the school guidance counselor in the high school. They still need volunteer hours. This might be a really good opportunity to...
Over their seniors?
Tech-savvy students that may be able to help generate a map with all the addresses or something like that to discuss with them. That's just my thought process of this. And is there, is there a place here in Town Hall that if we had somebody come in, that they can sit down at a worksite or workstation to go over some of this stuff? If Jen needed that? We got a couple of volunteers from the school, say.
When you say go over something, what do you...
Well, if they need to...
We can always find some temporary spot, but when you, I just want to make sure.
Need to create, if they have to come in and sit down on the computer. All right, and Jen says, well, how about...
Oh, we can certainly, we can set something up.
All right, someplace that they can sit down and get access to our database here to turn around and say, okay, fine. Because there may be a mapping system within our system.
Yeah, well, that database, that could be. I could check with our, I might know someone from our assessing department who could probably give us some good answers on that.
Yeah, just, like I said, just able to get into a Microsoft Word program or something like that, that we can go easily right into.
That's beyond my technical knowledge, but I can certainly ask that question.
All right, just a thought process. Jen, good job. Thank you.
Good job. Well done.
Thanks, Jen.
So then I guess I'll just wait to hear from you about dates. Okay, so then my question would be, if for some reason someone comes back and says June 26th doesn't work, how would you want me to handle that?
Just don't make it...
I think perhaps you could just work with Mr. Lafond and the town safety departments on a mutually agreeable date.
Okay.
We can interact with, again, strategize with public safety, what a good, obviously, July 4th weekend is not a good weekend.
Right.
That's obvious, you know, but still, I'm sure there's other options. We could, you know, conspire with our public safety people on, if this doesn't work.
And the other, excuse me, the other Saturday that's not good is Old Home Day, the last Saturday in July.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to get it done sooner before everybody has their yard sales and they're like, what the heck? Like, I could have just done it that day. But I wanted to give it some time, so. Okay, well, if you guys have any input or you think I'm crazy or just, I guess you can email me along with everybody else who's, or no, don't email me, never mind. Just forget it. Never mind.
All right, moving along.
Well, thanks, guys.
I could, just real quick, I know it's not on the agenda, so I won't get into it, but I know you've already got a copy of the COA, you know, projected...
I'm sorry.
We can't hear you.
COA, the projected reopening plan that has been working with the Department of Health and approving through a health agent. And I will be giving you a memo too, more email in the next couple of days about the plan to get our library back up at full speed. So we've got some staffing maneuvering to do, but we should be, hopefully, by the end of the month when these restrictions, Marop will be able to be open up full-time again. But I'll follow up with you on that.
Great news. Thank you. All right, let's see, minutes licensed topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. So our next meeting is now May 25th at 6:00 PM. We already did the Uroot Brewery 44, so we have a request for the use of Shirtlove Park by the Carver Red Hot Mamas for June 10th, 2021, from 11:30 to 3:00 PM. And they have requested that we waive the fee. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
I'll make a motion. No, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, make your mess.
No, I'll make a motion, we approve this and we waive the fee.
I'll second, except I don't know if you all remember that because they are a nonprofit, there is no fee.
That's right.
So they probably should be reminded that there's no fee anymore.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Request for a bike ride, the Best Buddies Challenge on October 2nd, 2021. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve. Second.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Not June 26th.
Good point. It is unanimous. Let's see, we have the minutes of 4/6/21 and May 4/21. Are there motions?
Elaine, did my additions get put in there? Did I sign?
So I just received an amendment from Bob today, so you guys don't have that. So you could approve them as amended and I can add in his changes, if that's what you want to do.
I'll approve the minutes for April 6th as amended.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have the minutes of May 4th, 2021.
Make a motion, we approve with the amendment.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? Down to discussion? All hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see, Select Board Community Announcements. Ms. Bogart.
Yeah, be on the lookout for the first annual Carver Townwide Yard Sale. More information to come.
All right. Mr. Belvin.
The Waste District, we're, we have one opening right now on the Waste District. We're hoping to get more people involved. We need one now. We're going to probably need another one. So that'll be two. We need to have at least one just to keep our meetings going because right now it's a six-member board. We need four members to have meetings. I am the chairperson of it. I put it out on Facebook and I put notices here. So if we, if Mr. Carter leaves, and he's our finance person right now, we're not going to have enough for a quorum to even have meetings. So, and just to let you guys know, we have a million dollars, close to a million dollars right now, that we need to stretch out to last almost 30 years to pay our bills. And we do have bills to pay. And plus, we have the land down there. So this is a vital service for us to protect our money and our interest. Any money we do save will come back to the town of Carver. So this is really important. If at the next meeting we don't get applicants, then the Select Board's going to have to act by our next meeting.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hoffman.
I'd just like to thank everybody that donated, attended, golfed, had a good time at the recent Kane Strong Golf Outing we had on Saturday. The weather cooperated once again and we had a record year. So I want to thank everybody that donated raffle prizes and whole sponsors and all that fun stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ewans.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the public know and you all that Jim Walsh, our planning director, and Rick and I met with SERPED on Monday, our regional planning agency. And we reviewed what needs to be updated on our open space and recreation plan. There are a lot of, it's about, well, it's technically seven years out of date, but it has a seven-year plan inserted into it, so part of it's still in action. But it does need to be updated so that we can be eligible for state funding if that need should arise. So SERPED is going to, I think they may have already provided us with a mission statement and maybe Mr. Lafond can get that to you all at some point. And Mr. Lafond's going to notify all the chairs of the appropriate boards, committees, and commissions that would be appropriate to be updating this plan. And we discussed, obviously, the Conservation Commission, the Recreation Committee, one member from the Select Board, if possible, the Agricultural Commission, and let's see, who else? The Council on Aging, the Commission on Disability. And we're hoping to get at least one person from the farming community too. So it's big, broad. And again, not everything needs to be updated in it. Like the chapter on geology hasn't really changed all that much, but certain things have changed. And SERPED will work on updating what they can for us and we're going to try to do what we can, which includes the survey of the public. It's a representative sample of the general population. And that's really a big deal because we need public input. We can't just make this plan up on our own. So just wanted everyone to know. Thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you. And I just have a couple of things. The Carver Memorial Day Parade is on this year. On May 31st, 2021, the town of Carver, in conjunction with the Veterans Office and the Sons of Veterans, will be hosting the Memorial Day Parade. The parade will step off at 9:30 from the Sons of Veterans Hall and conclude at the gazebo at Town Hall. So hope to see you all there. And also, Carver Old Home Day is going to be July 31st this year. And the volunteer meeting to organize it will be at United Parish on June 1st at 7:00 PM. And I know they're looking for volunteers. So if you have some time, maybe you could attend.
Mr. Chair, I have one thing to add to the Memorial Day Parade.
Yes.
It doesn't end at the gazebo. We continue down to the Center Cemetery, Central Cemetery in the middle of town where they play taps.
Okay.
Sorry, just had to add that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.